Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Tuesday, November fifteenth, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is citizen comment. You each have three minutes, and I'm going to call up the first four names. Michael Smith, Janad Rizki, Virginia Mann, and Mimi Peterson.
Come on.
Oh, and please give your address, your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Michael Smith. I live at 540 Forest Avenue. Uh, excuse me? Okay, I heard a comment. I'm here as the Chair of the Utility Commission to speak in support of the Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Program. The Utility Commission has voted and recommends that the City Council approve the proposed fiscal year 2012 capital improvement program for the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund. At our meeting on October fourteenth, we reviewed both the proposed capital improvement program as well as the proposed five-year capital improvement program in regards to projects managed by the Utilities Department. We had a detailed discussion of the projects and the different funding sources. We highly recommend, encourage the City Council to continue investing in the city's aging infrastructure. We feel it's important to replace the hundred-year-old water main, rehab the hundred-year-old combined sewer system, and maintain the water plant infrastructure. This, because over, almost sixty percent of our sewers are over eighty years old, and the work is needed to continue to provide safe and reliable drinking water and a functioning sewer to, for the twenty-first century. So we support the staff recommendation to increase the water rates by five percent in fiscal year 2012, realizing that this rate increase is necessary to provide the funding needed for the proposed capital improvement program. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank everyone who serves on the commission, please.
Move this over here for a minute. I'll put Ben when I'm done. Thank you. Janad Rizki. Is a five percent tax increase with fee adjustments better than an eight percent property tax increase? Last year, the city staff made mistakes when they did the yard waste sticker program and which caused the group contract to go up. Four percent probably of our tax increase might be attributed to this. What I find interesting, the current adjustments are really just the fees that you add to the water bills. Over a half year ago, I asked the city, I FOIA'd the city and asked about delinquent water bills. There are hundreds of citizens with delinquent and late water bills. I am suspicious probably of the management of the program, but that's not the issue at this time. I believe the city's creating quite a bit economic hardship on people. How many people will turn it in their, really what's going to happen is the city's using the water bills basically for taxes such as the large, the large trash cans and small trash cans. People are going to turn in the trash cans and your bills will go down and you won't, just like what happened with the leaf stickers. The bills should not be used for what I call political agendas. The city is distorting its property tax rate by transferring $3 million out of the Water Fund to the General Fund. The last speaker should be aware of that because the city's best taking the money out of the Water Fund that should be used for capital and taking it away. There is a regressive effect here on many people. The city's staff, when it talks about water bills, will give very low numbers, but given the number of people that have three and five, four and $500 water bills and for two months, I think it is of great concern. Recently, a public safety employee told me of residents without water who basically were dumping their waste in their backyards. I remember some years back, the city shut water off in a resident's home during a heat wave and she died. And this, and this was probably the other utilities, too. I don't feel replacing property taxes with increasing water fees is a good idea. Government at this day, it really at this time seems to be very interested in raising fees and adding more and more fees. These fees are highly regressive on the poor and people of moderate incomes. You know, adding more to parking meters and other fees with people that are, there was an interesting article recently about people that don't, don't have cars and how they can't find jobs. And basically, this basically affects those people. The federal government is cutting your funds to your CBG for your own building inspectors, the property standard inspectors. I frankly feel, there's a citizen who came up here and stated these property standard inspectors were going to inspect porches and things. They don't do that. The city of Chicago doesn't use that for their inspectors. I believe it's done by qualified engineers have to go do this. I think the council was misinformed to believe that these property standard inspectors will be doing that as part of these inspections. They're not qualified. These kind of things need to be really understood by people. Protecting the sub-public safety here is, I believe, is important, but doing things pretending to really align the city's pockets with more fees and things isn't in the public interest. I believe, I believe there's, the one first speaker talked about he wants increases in the water fees. That's fine and good, but you need to fix the capital plan. I don't believe the employees here are being put their feet to the fire on a lot of the spending of the capital. The capital spending here is not being done well. Anyone who looks at the capital budget can tell that nobody's being held accountable in these departments, and there's really problems here. And then my last thing is, is I asked for, I asked for the FM report of the fire at the water plant, which the city doesn't want to give me. So I think, as I mentioned that last night, why doesn't the city want to give me the report? If we have such a well-run program. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, if you will give us some leeway here. We're going to hear this charge every single citizen comment, I believe, until there is a response. If there was a cause of that fire that we know about, I wish we could say what it is. I'm curious, too, because this is just going to go on, meeting after meeting after meeting, until we get a response. If there's a confidential reason why it cannot be revealed, then we ought to say there's a confidential reason why it cannot be revealed.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, good evening. The report that we have from the insurance company is not a final report. We've never received a final report, and under the Illinois Public Records Act, we are not required to provide that. We would be happy to talk further with Mr. Rizki about this. Mr. Stonebeck, who I believe is in the other room, and I spoke about this this morning. We'd be happy to brief him what we know, but we do not have a final report, and so we are not able to make that.
So it's not that we're refusing to give the information, it's that we really do not have the final piece of information to share.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, see.
Go ahead, Virginia.
Virginia Mann, 3004 Normandy Place. First of all, I'd like to thank you for restoring the four positions in the Forestry Department. Clearly, maintaining a healthy urban forest is a top priority for Evanston residents. Whether we look back to when we first started Tree, the three hundred residents that showed up to talk about changing our forestry program, or the handful of folks who came here last night unorganized, again plead for making forestry a high priority, this is a top priority for the citizens of Evanston. And so we appreciate having the appropriate number of workers in the field, and we hope that that will help us maintain an effective department. But we believe they also need appropriate administrative staff, and that that staff should be maintained within their department. So before that administrative position is cut within the forestry budget, I encourage you to consider eliminating non-service-related expenditures from the budget. Many options were suggested by other members of the Evanston, other residents in Evanston last night. I'm all for fiscal responsibility. In fact, that's why I co-founded Tree, because it was the fiscally responsible thing to do. And I do hope, though, that staff cuts, whether they're in forestry or elsewhere, are at the bottom of the list of things to cut in our city budget. We all have to work more efficiently and more effectively with fewer resources. So as you look at the budget, I hope that not only do you look at things to cut that are not staff-related, but also that every department, including our friends in forestry, look at how to operate more efficiently and more effectively in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mimi Peterson. And next would be Lee Skinner.
Hi, Mimi Peterson, 748 Wesley, co-founder of Tree, and here to lend my support to the Forestry Department and the smooth delivery of efficient tree and forestry services. I was looking at the memo that's been generated, talking about the many tasks that are involved, and I'm just a tad bit concerned about the memo that I saw from Streets and Sanitation with regard to bringing forestry into Streets and Sand, because I think that that would create a little more chaos and a little less efficiency. And I wanted to just add that I don't support that, but I'm very grateful that last night you decided to restore the funding for the four employees, and because I want that to work well, I think it's important that we maintain the administrative position as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Mary Larson and Kevin O'Connor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager Bob Quitz and City Clerk Green. My name is Mary Larson. I live at 2010 Cleveland Street. I am also the Coordinator of Health Services for Evanston Skokie School District, and I serve on the Evanston Health Advisory Council. This evening, I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to express my appreciation of the Evanston Health Department. Over the past eleven years of my tenure, our district has enjoyed a fantastic collaborative relationship during which we have worked together to positively impact the health of youth. When we lost access to the city health clinic, the Evanston Health Department helped us find alternative healthcare providers. Their experts are readily available to provide information over a variety of issues, including but not limited to questions about infectious diseases like H1N1, pertussis, standardization in school gardens and food handling, follow-up on bed bug infestations. We've worked on tasks which include the administration of the H1N1 vaccine in our schools, as well as school-based dental clinics, and an implementation of a city and district-wide community health initiative, Evanston Let's Move, to combat child obesity. Members of their staff sit on our District Wellness Council and on our Medical Advisory Board. Honestly, whenever we need an answer to a public health question, the resource is there. They assist us in connecting us with partners in the community, writing grants, there's always someone available. Please note that this availability is not due to an overabundance in staff, but rather it's due to the dedication of the staff. Over the past years, we've seen the size of the Health Department personnel dwindle, and yet somehow, they're still able to provide timely assistance with and direction to community resources. The concept of a public health department has evolved over the years, and our Evanston Health Department has evolved accordingly. It is truly exemplary in its ability as a nexus for our community to access health resources. In this time of crunching numbers and tightening our belts, please be assured that the Health Department is a vital resource for Evanston and is worth every penny that the budget allows for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no budget deficit in Evanston. As I stated last night, there's only misplaced priorities. Last night's agenda, I didn't sign up to bore anybody with me speaking twice, but item oh-five on the agenda was approval of a $31,000, and I quote, "five-hundred-dollar loan evenly split between forgivable debt and interest-free debt to Corrado Cutlery LLC," end quote. Why are we giving $15,750 away? Where do the taxpayers sign up for free money to pay for the city council's intended eight percent property tax increase? It's very disingenuous and hard to understand when we're always told by this council or city staff that we're facing such a horrific financial situation, yet we continue to give money away like it's no tomorrow. All the money out of the Economic Development Committee meetings that gets voted for, I think is inappropriate. If we cannot sell Evanston based on its lake, Northwestern University, its citizens, its talent, the Metra, the L, for the whole community, bribing businesses to come, bribing businesses to stay, giving away money left and right, isn't going to do anything. And remember, we've already tried this. We did this with the whole real estate bubble, and where are we now? We're broke, and we have, we have an eight percent property tax increase, fees are going up, services are going down. Yet this seems to be the mindset. I know we're stuck, I know it's a difficult situation, I continue to try and find somebody to take accountability for how we got here. The only way we're going to solve this is to admit that some really, really bad mistakes were made and move forward. Now, for the deficit, this 3-1-1 system, we spent $650,000, and all that the citizens were complaining about is they wanted the phones answered at City Hall. So instead of adding an extra switchboard operator, we created a twelve union positions, a 3-1-1 system that goes seven days a week, and it's nothing more simple than saying, hey, answer your phone, you will be judged on it. There was no data showing how bad it was according to our city manager. Now there's data, but we don't have that money in that. As far as for city staff and the Alderman and Mayor, our elected officials, I don't want to see anybody lose salary, but shouldn't that be the thing that we're doing when we're so broke? The food budget is, actually, let's start with the Law Department. The Law Department, the 2011 budget, was $828,120. It's estimated to come in at $760,000 and change. Next year is proposed for a million dollars, 500, 5,272. Contingencies in the city manager's office, there's $258,200. The estimate for this year is just spending fifty grand. There's more money. We're getting up to where we could half our alleged deficit. As far as for membership dues for the City Council, the budget said for 2011, $39,000.
Mr. O'Connor, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, I will. Madam Mayor, the estimate now is $54,764. When the developers come and they want our money, this is what they're saying. Sorry, it's upside down. Santa, I want it all. We cannot afford to be Santa, to privatize profit and socialize risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Skinner.
Hi, Lee Skinner Anderson, 1123 Noise Street. I wanted to thank you for restoring the four forestry positions. They're very important, and I think thanks is in order. And I also want to thank the Forestry Department. They do an amazing job. But I bet everybody here doesn't realize that we're in the middle of a Tree emergency, and we're also in a quarantine zone. But it doesn't feel that way because the Forestry Department does such an amazing job. We finally got the Dutch elm disease under control, but the Emerald Ash Borer is ripping through our city, and I estimate it will cost $6 million by the time we are done. $6 million. The Forestry Department has not asked you for any extra money due to the Emerald Ash Borer, and they are trying to absorb those costs each year into their standard operating budget. That's how efficient and organized they've become now that they're not chasing Dutch elm disease and now that that's under control. That's an amazing feat. They're probably absorbing a million dollars of Emerald Ash Borer costs each year into their normal budget. And all I'm asking you to do is give them the basic resources to try to do that. They are a wonderful, organized team, and you need to keep the secretary position of the Forestry Department. Her name is Catherine Steinbach, and I really don't think secretary is the right title for her. She is a liaison, an organizer, a coordinator, a dispatcher. She's terrific. She's a people person, but she's also extremely organized and quick, efficient, accurate, smart, loves to learn things. She loves her job. You know what? We love her. She has an extraordinary combination of talents that I don't see very often. I own a business, and I would hire her in a second, but you know what? I want her in the Forestry Department. I don't want her somewhere else in the city. We need her in forestry. I want to list some of the things that she does. She processes 1,200 electronic 3-1-1 requests every year. She handles 2,100 emails pertaining to questions that the 3-1-1 operators have. She gets 1,000 calls from residents. She gets 800 directly emailed requests from residents about different tree plantings and tree trimmings. She does payroll for forty full-time and part-time staff plus eleven seasonals. She enters 1,700 entries for storm damage every year. She does 1,000 entries for public tree removals. She does 942 entries for tree trim requests and area trim requests. She has sent out 424 letters for Dutch elm disease, Emerald Ash Borer, private tree hazards, and parkway removals. She issues permits. She issues invoices. She coordinates the duly digging locations. She gives storm reports. She files legal claims and requests. She tracks tree plantings, site markings, stump removals, planting choices from residents, storm requests. She relays storm reports to crews and supervisors. She disperses inspection requests to crew leaders. She reviews work reports, time off requests, personnel forms. She compiles budget statistics. I can't believe she has time to compile budget statistics after doing all that, and she also processes bid requests. That is an amazing employee. That would take two people to do that job, and I bet it would take each of those people a year to learn all of those skills, to do all of that at once. You will cripple the Forestry Department if you pull that position. How is that forty hours of work, and I think that's fifty hours of work a week, supposed to go somewhere else? Are you supposed to forward the calls to the foresters and they'll turn off their chainsaws and say, excuse me, ma'am, let me turn off my chainsaw while I write down your tree planting request? Or is it going to land on Paul D'Agostino's desk? Where is all of that work going to land? Don't cripple the Forestry Department. They have millions of dollars in their budget, and they do a lot. I urge you to keep the secretary position. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Next item on the agenda is fiscal year 2012 budget discussion and consideration. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Brandon, if we could put up the, the yellow piece of paper. If you'll notice at your seats this evening, you have a yellow piece of paper and a blue piece of paper. Trying to make things as easy as possible in the homestretch. The yellow piece of paper is a budget balancing page, as I had promised you from last night. Based on the council's discussion, I'm sorry, based on the council's discussions of the last several meetings, I have a proposal that will balance the budget, and I'd like to walk through that for you. It's a combination of items that you've already discussed, as well as some recommendations from me. First is category removed from consideration. The council removed from consideration the reduction of four forestry workers, the net savings there is $140,000, and as a reminder, that is a number just for the savings of the, the foresters had they been eliminated. There was a contract cost in there as well, so that is why that number is smaller than you might expect. I'm also proposing that we reduce three percent of the proposed property tax increase, and so the value of that is $1,230,000. Next is to move forward and fund the balance of the requests from the Library Board. That was a larger number in the proposed budget. Since then, I've gone to the Library Board and recommended that there not be rent charge for the North Branch Library. That was $75,800. In addition, there was $20,000 for overhead costs, and so that is $95,800 that is reduced from the, the net increase that the Library Board would require. I've also proposed to the Library Board that there not be a tax levy for 2012. They have agreed to that, and there's other issues with the library which I'd be happy to talk about in a few moments. Next, the outsourcing of crossing guards is an issue that's been discussed several times. My recommendation at this point is to take that off the table from consideration, and the net savings there would be $90,000. And then finally, the adjustment of the proposed parking fine increase to $5 in the proposed budget. That $5 includes overtime at parking meters. The City Council last evening removed that from those violations that would be increased by $5. So the change in revenue for that line item is $310,000. So that leaves a total dollar amount removed from the proposed budget of $1,865,800.
Alderman Burris has a question.
Why did you take off the outsource of the crossing guards? I'm not sure that I heard that strongly last night at all, and I'm not sure where that direction came from.
It did not, it is, it is just my recommendation to the council as part of a package if the council wishes to remove that or make changes to that, but that would be my.
I was just wondering the rationale of why your thinking changed. I'm just trying to figure, figure this out, why your thinking changed from.
Why don't we go through the whole proposal and then, and then we'll talk about it. Thank you, Colleen.
And then, again, to balance, many of these things have already been discussed by the council. The parking meters, 25 cents for nine months is $525,000. The adjustments, the small can and large can refuse fees, $37,500 for the small can, $504,000 for the large can. The athletic tax adjustment that was discussed last night. Again, there are, were a couple of positions, vacant positions below the line. In order to help balance the budget, I'm proposing that we move forward with the elimination of the zoning planner position, which is $100,225. The council agreed last night to include the transfer cost of ticket collection agency fees to violators for nine months. That's $90,000. The budget included a $500,000 transfer from the General Fund for capital costs, and I'm proposing, given the issues that we're facing, that that not happen, so that's a savings of $500,000. And then last night, the council asked us to look at the real estate transfer tax, and we're proposing a modest adjustment of about six percent increase, and that's $75,000. And that brings to a total of $1,885,388. So that's $44 more than we need. Yeah, forty-four, that was, was that the number, or has it changed?
The changes, they only pulled $44.
Okay, and so that's a, it's a difference of five hundred and change, but when we get to the blue sheet, the overall, when we roll it all together, we have a balance of $44 out of the overall budget, including a $13 million reserve. So that is on the yellow sheet. In order to, in order to balance the budget, the blue sheet then is the balancing worksheet. And Brandon, I think we have that as well, which we can, you can certainly read it easier at your place than you can on the screen. This is the original budget reduction worksheet that you received with the proposed budget. We have added a second column under final adjustments to reflect the changes that are reflected on the yellow sheet. And as you go through that to the fourth page, excuse me, the third page, in the, in the, in the shaded area, that leaves a net balance of $44. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, certainly these have been difficult discussions, but it would seem that through the, the course of the last several evenings, the council settled mostly on the issues that are there before you on the yellow sheet. So that is the proposal for budget balancing. There are a number of other issues I'd like to talk about this evening, Madam Mayor, when it's appropriate. One is to look at the capital budget and to get a final recommendation from the council there, to talk about the potential of a one-time transfer from reserves for capital. Our reserves are a little over $13 million in the General Fund, and I think it may be appropriate to consider some, a one-time expenditure from reserves for capital projects. And then again, also talk about the library.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, did you want to pursue the crossing guards now?
I would like to pursue the crossing guards now. Would just really like some ration. Would just really like some rationale on your flip-flopping on this. And also, under the two balance, the now deciding not to transfer the $500,000 to capital, which would then, of course, once again, increase what we borrow and our debt load. I thought it was one of particularly you, city manager's, goals to pay as we go on some of our capital improvements. So I'm just a little concerned on why, from one week to the next, we've made such a huge change. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Burris, let me cover the second part first. With the capital budget, we're proposing, and maybe this will be an appropriate time to talk about it, a overall reduction in the capital budget to $5 million. And so we would look to see making to the, making to the council's goals an overall reduction in the debt that would be issued. These are difficult decisions, and what I've tried to do as your city manager is to listen to competing interests. On the one hand, the council is looking to spend down money that we're spending on the capital side, but there's also been great concern about the property tax. My hope was that perhaps we would reduce the property tax increase by 2%. However, I heard last night from many members of the council that you were looking at more at 3%. So at about $400,000 a percent, each one of those increments is a fair amount of money. So in order to find counterbalancing reductions, I think that's where the challenge comes. With the crossing guards, I think I've heard from the council and from the community that there are different types of services that we provide that touch people in different ways, and people really are touched by crossing guards. And while I think that there are better ways to do this, I don't think all the pieces are in place to do that. I think that there had been, Alderman Wilson had talked about reaching out to the school districts. There was some interest, but it was a cool interest. Perhaps it makes sense over the next year to work with the school districts to flesh out a transfer more. Maybe it's worth talking a little bit more about the logistics of what the contracting out would be. Another thing I've learned in my time in Evanston is just because an idea may not be right at one period of time, that does not mean that perhaps after some additional community discussion, it might be right in the future. And my sense is that the crossing guards is one of those issues. People feel very strongly about them, the connection to the safety of their children, and there's no question of the importance of crossing guards. It's just a matter, if you are going to disentangle or change significantly how that service is delivered, it may make sense to talk a little bit more about that. So I guess I don't think of it as flip-flopping. I think of it as part of my responsibility at this point in the budget process is to help the council find a solution that you can agree upon so we can move forward with an adopted budget.
I guess I was just confused by, because our comments last night, I don't think necessarily gave that direction. And so that's why I was just wondering, who you had talked to, and I got it. I got it now. Thank you for the answer. I got it.
General discussion. Alderman Wilson.
Okay, I have a few things. One comment I'll make about the crossing guards. I have talked to some representatives from some of these school, affected schools, and I think rather than talk to them over the course of the next year, maybe what we could do is talk to them over the course of the next month and see if we can't get some of these, some of this funding incorporated into their next year's budget, because they're going to be starting their budget process soon. And I wasn't kicked out of anyone's offices. I don't think the school districts are interested in paying the entire freight here, but when you look at the smaller number, the cost savings that we could realize from possibly outsourcing, I think we might be able to achieve that level of funding from the schools if it were divided between the different, the private schools that benefit and the public schools. So I think that is a realistic possibility. So I'd like to see that we can continue that moving forward and get some of that funding from them. And not being on the economic development committee, I have some questions about a couple of the components here. First one being the, the description is redevelopment consulting services, the 122,500. If my reading is right, we have.
Could you give pages?
I will. It's page.
Thank you.
Scrolling to the bottom of the page. It is in the budget memo packet, page 112. If I read this correctly, we have an existing contract with a $42,500 balance. Is that correct?
You're, I'm sorry, page 1?
112 of the memo packet, not the budget.
Alderman Wilson, members of the council, yes, I'm looking on page 112. We have, I think, various contracts, and Mr. Griffin is here, and perhaps he could help me with this. One is for a financial consultant, and I'm not sure if that's the 11 or the 42 Michio's.
It is. Steve Griffin, Director of Community and Economic Development. This is really made up of two main parts. One is we've said, we're proposing to set aside $30,000 for the Evanston Plaza work. That's going to go on. It's for sale. And then the balance of that, the balance of this amount is the TIF consultant work that we brought on at about $80,000 last year. And Alderman Wilson's right, we anticipate only spending down about 43 of that.
And what's the $50,000 possible SSA study?
That's, that's to look at two different merchant areas to determine whether or not they're ready to go SSA. Chicago and Maine is one of them, Dempster and Chicago is the other. And again, we don't have to do that, but it's money that we thought we would invest looking for the tools to basically redevelop those two areas. And yes, sir, they are consultant studies.
Okay. And my inclination is to back those two line items out of the total balance. That's my inclination. I had questions. Maybe we can talk about that first, I guess. So I'll move that we back those two contracts, or proposed contract amounts, out of the consultant Just those two components, the $30,000 and the $50,000 for a total of 80.
42.5, you're leaving.
I didn't do the math, but that's right, 42.5. I think we're already locked into that contract, correct?
You've made a motion.
That's my motion.
Hearing no second.
All right, we'll pay all those consultants then.
Alderman, when did you want?
I'll pass if it fails for a second.
Alderman Rainey, did you want?
Madam Mayor, I wasn't quite sure, were you recommending, Alderman Wilson, that we eliminate the consultant, the TIF consultant, Bob Brischlucky?
No, no, not that one. It's just the, it's the, it's the one we haven't hired.
The special service?
Right, the special service and the $30,000 for Evanston Plaza.
All right. I have a second question. Thank you for clarifying that. Second question is, the source of the revenue for these two expenditures, Mr. City Manager?
My sense is there be a combination of, well, neither of these are in current TIF, so this will be the economic development fund.
So the source of economic development funds?
Hotel tax and amusement tax.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
There's no second time?
No.
Nothing to say?
Okay, I guess I'll go on my list. I move that we restore the forestry secretary position that's been discussed so heavily.
Seconded to restore the forestry secretary position, Alderman Burris.
I've heard a lot, and we've gotten memos and great praises about the secretary position that is to be eliminated, and all the work that she does. What we haven't heard is what the other secretaries and people in the department do, as well as how many secretaries are in that department, and what their capabilities are, and are we just randomly eliminating a position by, for someone who does outstanding work, but we may have overall a personnel, there are too many in the department already. So I want to know how many secretaries there are in Parks and Forestry? I'm getting, and what their duties are, because clearly the person that we're talking about, but we can't talk about the person as much as we need to talk about positions. And every time we go to eliminate roles, we talk about people versus positions. So could we get an overall of how many positions are in that secretary at Parks and Forestry? And what are they doing if this person is clearly doing the job of three people?
Before you answer that, city manager, I would like to add to that question, how many secretaries are in other departments, as in Public Works and various other departments?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to ask the budget staff to help me find page numbers because we did do a review. I think it answers both of those questions. Marty, do you have the page number and the budget memos?
It's not in the budget memos, it's in the budget document for positions.
Well, I think there was an answer, a question about the department. Doug, do you have the page number?
No, I have none.
Well, I think there's a document here that listed the, in the budget memo, that listed the number of secretaries, and also compared it to, I think it was Alderman Grover's question, that compared it to the Public Works Department. And I apologize, we're now putting our finger on it quickly. The forestry positions, arborists, parks forestry, crew leaders, parks forestry workers, three, and the secretary is not included there on that list, and I'm not quite sure why.
It was in the next section.
The facilities management, two facility management supervisors, one architect, project manager, one ADA, CIP project manager, one secretary, 13 facility maintenance workers.
I'm sorry, what page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, 135.
Of what? The budget?
Of the budget memo packet.
Well, it's 136.
Okay. Oh, for the general support. So there are, so there's a secretary two in facilities maintenance that's listed on page 135, and on page 136, there's a secretary two in Parks, Forestry, general support, and then, okay, so those are the two. So it's Benita and Catherine. So there's two secretaries that work within Mr. D'Agostino's division. The public works, maybe Ms. Robinson can just go through the clerical within her department.
Could you just clarify, what does that other secretary do? I just, just would like to know that as we're making a decision on positions, not people, what does that other person do? Does that other person do the same task that the one we're talking to eliminate, and at the same level? We just haven't heard that equal balance out.
They're both secretary two positions.
But do they do, we haven't heard, I guess, are they doing the same work at the same level? I just haven't heard that.
And then that gets into people, and I think it's, you know.
No, no, I mean, I, no, but I mean.
Secretary, they're both secretary two, so under the city's classification structure, the skills, abilities, qualifications are the same for both positions. They have different types of work.
That's what I'm asking.
One deals with forestry, one deals with facility maintenance. Both have other clerical administrative duties. The reason I have come to you and suggested the elimination of one of those two is that I believe that there is opportunity to have some of that work shifted over. 3-1-1 has taken over some of that work. Ms. Robinson's provided memorandums and can probably speak to them about the reductions in administrative staffing that have occurred in the Public Works Department. Community Development Department has one secretary. There was one eliminated a couple of years ago. We have gone through department by department during the last several years and have eliminated a number of clerical positions because we've tried to consolidate and be more efficient. Ms. Robinson, you want to maybe just quickly?
I just wanted to clarify, the question that was asked was the comparison between the Streets and Sanitation Division and the Forestry Division, not the Public Works Department and Forestry Division. The Streets and Sanitation Division has no secretary, no administrative support.
How many employees in the division?
45.
So there's 45 employees there, and there's no administrative position?
No.
Alderman Burris, I realize, does that kind of give you the sense we can try to give you more detail?
So basically, Parks and Rec has two secretaries and Public Works has zero.
Well, no, this is the facilities and, Mr. D'Agostino is the superintendent of facilities and forestry, so it's just his division. We could talk, there's other divisions within Parks Recreation and Community Services, and we could, there are clerical at the senior center within the Recreation Division, in the administrative offices of the department, so there are other positions.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
I don't know the individual that we're talking about, and I don't know that I've ever met the person, and know nothing about the person other than what people have stepped up and said. But in reviewing the job descriptions and assessing what appears to be the significant impact on the department, and particularly in view of the fact that we did restore the other positions, it seemed to me to make sense to leave that position intact.
Alderman Rainey?
That motion has been seconded, correct?
Yes, it has been.
I'd like to ask who, what is the position of the person who answers the phone when we call Streets and Sanitation?
Right now, you get a 3-1-1 operator.
No, when I call, when I say I want to talk to Suzette Robinson, or I call her directly, who is the person that answers?
That is an executive secretary for the department head.
All right, so it's a secretary. I mean, it's a level of secretary.
It's a level of secretary.
But were we just told that there were no secretaries?
There is none. You don't, so you don't, that call goes to the department director.
But who is she? I mean, not who is she, but you're telling me that the department, I mean, I have no idea who she is, but there is a person who answers the phone, and you just told me it's a secretary, and we were just told there are no secretaries.
There are no secretaries within the Streets and Sanitation.
There are no secretaries within the Streets and Sanitation Division. I have an executive secretary as a department head, as does the director of Parks Recreation and Forestry. So I was trying to compare apples to apples, director to director, division to division.
Okay, I'm just not smart enough to understand the difference.
And not all of our department directors have executive secretaries. Public Works, Administrative Services, Police, Parks, Law, Health and Law. So that's two-thirds of our, so the departments that have no executive secretaries, Community Development, Fire, there's a library, Paul, but it's not, there's not one in library. So it's a mixed bag, and I think what has happened over time is each department has adjusted per budget and per needs.
Well, it's interesting, Madam Mayor, that I've talked to people in various departments who feel while 3-1-1 is great for the community, it has not really relieved anybody of any work at City Hall. So when we say 3-1-1 is going to take over the responsibilities, most of the responsibilities of this person, that's just not true, this position.
Well, but what we've done, Alderman Rainey, is we are continuing to do process reengineering, and in some departments, it's happened faster than others. And one of the things I think we have an opportunity to do is make it work faster. And one of the things I think we have an opportunity to do is make it work faster in the Department of Parks Recreation and Community Services.
But that doesn't always happen, I mean...
But it's my job to make it happen, Madam Mayor.
I know, but it, I mean, just, just take a look at the recycling center right now. I went by there today and almost crashed my car. I could not believe the amount of stuff there. Who's moving it? I mean, it looks like things are at a standstill in some places around town. It, I don't know, and it seems...
And we haven't had Streets and Sanitation superintendent for six months, one is starting, thank goodness, right after Thanksgiving. And so, again, every department struggles with resources, and one of the things we've tried to do with this budget is to level the playing field. Public Works has worked very hard with that, Community and Economic Development, your number one priority, and they have the least amount of clerical support probably of any department.
But they don't have chainsaws either in that department. I mean, they're not out cutting down trees and cleaning streets. I think there are, there are serious differences between departments in the needs of the various departments, and the skill of the people in the various departments to be able to execute the roles that they play and their goals. And I don't see the tree trimmers answering the phones or, you know, doing the Julie surveys or issuing the permits or those kinds of things, and so, that's why I think that some, you can't look, you're the city manager, you can't look at all departments in the same way.
But I look at the Department of Parks and Recreation, and I see lots of other people who can help the cause.
All right, let's just talk about the library. We're going to hire a new person in the library to do outreach? Why don't we take one of the people in the library now and do, have them do outreach? I mean, that, that's the same argument you're making here. I, I think it might be folly to keep the four forestry workers and not this person, this position. I keep saying person, I have no idea who this person is. But it just, I'm just not sure that, I mean, I'd like to hear from the department. Who's, is Doug Gaynor going to get on the phone and start doing the Julie surveys and issuing the invoices and doing the payroll? I don't think so.
Of course not.
Who is?
And the department and I have a disagreement, and I have let the department share with you their best professional judgment, however, I'm sharing with you my best professional judgment, and that is there is opportunities here to consolidate operations. And there is a conflict, Alderman Rainey, between the feeling of the department and my feeling. I look at what Public Works has been through, I look at what Community and Economic Development has been through, I look at other departments, I look at Police and Fire and the support that they have for the sheer volume of people and issues that come before them, and I think that there are opportunities to economize, and that's my recommendation to the council. But again, I let Mr. DiAgostino, Mr. Gaynor, share with you their honest opinions because I felt it was important for you to hear it, but I'm telling you I disagree with those opinions and feel that there is opportunities for them to economize like our other large departments have over time.
Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to retain the secretary position in Forestry. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tindham?
No.
Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Three, four, five, four against, five against four, four. Five, it fails.
The motion fails. Five to four. Alderman Wilson?
On page, now I've totally lost it. Okay, page, lost the page, I should say. Page one fourteen.
Of the memos?
Memos. This is just further detail on the payments to developers category for economic development. Last year, this category, I guess I should say the current year, we had eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars going to Gordon Foods, which we discussed last night, for their remediation, which made a good deal of sense, and we have Chicago Main Marketing Assistance, forty thousand dollars, CTA via Doc permitting, excited about that as well, seventy thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for Howard Street, I'm sorry, four seventy-five for Howard Street Property Acquisition, and miscellaneous project assistance, one fifty. And the request for this year is for five hundred thousand dollars. But to me, in the absence of any specifically planned items, I propose that we reduce that number to half of the five hundred thousand dollars to two fifty.
What page are you on? One fourteen.
Page one-one-four.
Page one-one-four of the budget memos. One hundred fourteen. Not of the budget, yeah, oh yeah, you're looking at it. So, it's five hundred thousand dollars, and proposing we cut that in half.
That's already been spent. No, we spent the eight thirty-five.
Right, it's page one fourteen. You got it?
Wait, me, okay.
My page one fourteen says five hundred thousand. Payment to developers.
Mine does, too.
What's the date on it?
My five hundred.
Madam Mayor, could, could we hear that again? I didn't have the page before me, and I, I'm not...
It's page one-one-four.
I have it.
All right, good. Alderman Wilson, would you repeat your motion?
In view of the fact that we don't have any specific projects or programs in place, I'm proposing that we reduce the allocation from five hundred thousand dollars to two fifty.
And that would be the five hundred thousand that's showing payment to developer, current year estimate, estimate eight thirty-five?
No.
And then, in the next column, initial department budget, five hundred? That's on my page one fourteen.
Right, and final budget amount for next year would be five hundred, and I'm proposing to reduce that. I'm basically suggesting we cut these economic development allocations. There's nothing specific...
Are you also suggesting that the committee not meet for the next, I mean, I don't understand...
No, I didn't say eliminate it. I proposed one cut, that was already not seconded, and I'm proposing another one, and...
But could you explain it?
Explained it yesterday. You know, I don't see people, not everyone who's applying is demonstrating a specific need for the funding, and I think we should be cutting back on the money that's being, that's getting passed out. I understand the importance of economic development, I'm not suggesting that any of the staff be eliminated, I think the staff is doing an excellent job, but most of what they're doing doesn't cost anything beyond their salaries. And, you know, basically passing out free money, well, I think one of the speakers probably said it well, we're assuming the risk and we're taking on the risk for private benefit and private profit, and I don't think that that's appropriate, particularly given our economic and our budget circumstances. So, we just talked about this person, this position that's doing all this work, and we're saying, no, we're not going to keep that position, but at the same time, we're going to say, gosh, we've got a half million dollars that we might pass out, let's hang on to that just in case somebody asks for a free handout.
Mr. City Manager, the, the money that we're proposing here, that would go to the neighborhood business districts, that would go to facade improvements, that would go to microloans, that, to those kind of expenditures, is that correct?
Yes, some of those things are funded by other sources, but yes, in general, this is the money that the committee has made use of in the past, as is mentioned on the sheet here, for economic incentives to bring businesses here.
All right, there's a motion, and it's looking for a second, Alderman Grover?
Hasn't been seconded.
No, it has not been seconded. I believe it will not be. Alderman Wilson?
Working my way down the list here. Sort of alternating between my proposed cuts and my things that I think we should be looking at differently. With regard to the Parks and Recreation fee increases. Let's see, well, let me just, let me just, I guess, fifty-six and following. We have essentially three hundred thousand dollars or so, City Manager?
Reduce, yes.
To increase collections on these fees for a variety of Parks and Recreation programs, beaches, camps, et cetera. But in trying to review some of these carefully, I note that we have some, some very large increases for a number of these programs. For example, an aquatics camp program has a fifty dollar increase from three fifty to four hundred. And when I go back and I look at the budget, which I've thoroughly shuffled, unfortunately, but generally looking at that, for example, the aquatics program, that's a program that brings in approximately a hundred thousand dollars more than what it's costing us. And notwithstanding that fact, we're going to charge those families another fifty dollars per kid to send their kid to the camp. With regard to ice time and having a child that spends a good deal of time, as well as our money, at the ice rink, we have a proposal to increase the coupon price from seven dollars to nine dollars, which, that doesn't sound like a big deal, however, when you consider the fact that the kids that are using these coupons typically will use maybe ten, fifteen, twenty a week, you're talking about increasing that family's cost for their child to do the skating program anywhere from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars a year, and that's a huge increase. So, I don't think that these, these allocations are fair, I don't think it, I don't think that the increases are reflective of our desire to try to preserve the quality of life that we have in Evanston. You know, the examples go on and on, it seems like a small amount, but if you're a parent and you're trying to find the activities and camps and things for your child for the summer, you could be looking at hundreds of dollars of increases. And frankly, you know, we talk about a few dollars a month for the trash pickup, but that's, that's pale in comparison to these hundreds, or in some instances, could be thousands of dollars that people are going to be absorbing for some of these things. So, I would propose that we redirect the Parks and Recreation Department to scale these back to maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if they can do so in short order, to works with the, work with the Parks and Rec Committee to try to get a more appropriate allocation of which programs are being increased and how much. So, the proposal is to go from the three hundred and fifty increase, I'm sorry, three oh five increase to a hundred and fifty, with the Parks and Rec Board to assist in the reallocation.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to change the allocation from three hundred and fifty to...
Three oh five, to one fifty.
From three oh five to one fifty. All right. Seeing no further lights. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to one. The motion passes. Alderman Burris?
Page fifty-eight on the budget memo, although it may be fifty-seven for everybody else, my numbering's a bit off. The, I don't know why on my computer, the season tokens for non-residents for the beaches, I think that's off. It says season tokens for non-residents would increase from forty to forty-two, and that's the preseason price, but that's...
It's all kind of been turned upside down, so what we'll do, Alderman Burris, members of the councils, will come back to you with a reworked plan that changes it by a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. But I just wanted to let you know that was off.
Alderman Rainey?
I lost my page, I'll just pass on me for now.
Okay. I can't get your light off. All right, seeing no further lights. I assume you're all studying hard.
Yeah.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, with that change, we're now out of balance by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. There are other items that were not considered, that did not include as part of this balancing. One was additional furlough days. Furlough days are a hundred thousand dollars a day, there were three below the line. If the council wanted to consider one additional day, that'd be a hundred of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Alderman Holmes?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we not use any of the furlough days, the below the line for the staff. I think that we've taken enough from the staff over the last couple of years, and I'd just not like to see that done.
I agree with you, Alderman Holmes. Alderman Grover?
My question related.
He's second.
Been moved and seconded. All right. It's been moved and seconded not to increase the furlough days. Alderman Rainey?
Are we going, I don't want to speak to that.
Okay, Alderman Burris, did you want to speak to that?
I do. Do we want to take all three off the table in one fell swoop? And the reason why I ask that is it can be a possibility to, something to keep in our back pocket of the hundred thousand. Is it one day would be a hundred thousand dollar savings, and if that helps us keep more people on staff, I would assume that our employees would prefer to keep more people on staff and keep services at a good level and reduce a little bit per person than reduce substantially a whole, losing a whole person. It's just something I've heard in business circles of employees are willing to take a little bit and reduce their salary a little bit versus getting rid of other employees. So, I understand that we don't want to hurt overall, but even if we do it by one, that gives a hundred thousand dollars, and it's hurting employees just a small bit, not a large amount. Just throwing it out there for conversation.
Alderman Rainey?
I don't want to speak...
I'm battling with your light.
I know, I'm sorry.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, I see no further lights for discussion, to remove the furlough days from consideration. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Not to remove this, not to add furlough day. Alderman Holmes, repeat your motion.
Not to add the furlough day.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Four to five, it fails.
Four to five, the motion fails. Please, Alderman Rainey.
I promise. On page forty-six of the budget, under the various revenue titles with the actual two ten, the two thousand and eleven, the estimate and the proposed, in the middle of the page where the sanitation charges are, there are no entries, and I'm not sure why... where the sanitation charges are, there are no entries, and I'm not sure why that is.
Because those charges are now budgeted in the solid waste fund.
In the solid waste fund. And is that consistent throughout the budget?
Marty's nodding yes. It's supposed to be consistent throughout the budget. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it would be helpful to know if there's other items that you're thinking of other than the hundred and fifty-five, because we could maybe take a short break. If that's the only, if that's the nut we need to be done, we could probably put our heads together and come up with a couple of different ideas to present to you. If that number's going to grow, that's important to note, too.
All right. Is everyone okay with a short break?
No, I had my light on.
All right, Alderman Rainey?
I want to discuss the real estate transfer tax. I see that you put in seventy-five thousand dollars. This, my comments on this have nothing to do with an attempt to balance the budget. I've been working on this for several weeks now. I believe, given that at our five, at our six-month interval, our revenue has been generated beyond what we've budgeted as far as the ten-month. I think we are, we would be very responsible by budgeting a million eight hundred thousand. You have budgeted, you've added seventy-five, which makes it a million seven hundred. And I just think when you compare it from the years when we've had, you know, less than profitable real estate market, that that is a fair number.
One point eight.
One point eight. No, he's recommended an additional seventy-five, which makes it, so I'm asking for the council to consider another hundred thousand. I don't think it's irresponsible in any way. I think it is a moderate projection.
One point eight.
One point eight.
It's in the middle of page forty-three of the budget.
Yeah, forty-three.
General fund portion of the budget.
The budget.
It's just line fifty-one.
I'm sorry, Alderman Grover, can you turn on your mics? We can't hear you.
It's probably, it's in more than one place in the budget.
Alderman Grover, would you give the page number again?
I think Alderman Rainey and I are looking at page forty-three of the general fund section of our budget notebooks, and it's line fifty-one, six-twenty, where it's proposed for this year, here.
Perfect, thank you.
One point six-two-five. City Manager proposes to add seventy-five thousand to that. Alderman Rainey's proposing to add a hundred thousand more to that, to bring it all up to our estimate, projection of one point eight.
And the seventy-five is on the yellow sheet?
Yeah.
Alderman Rainey, if you don't mind my asking, what makes you think that times are going to get better sufficiently to have this work?
I think, you know, this isn't something that I'm daydreaming about. I think the facts are very clear. At six months, in this year's real estate transfer tax, we're way beyond what our estimate for the budget was for this year. The previous year, we didn't do that badly based on our projections, and we know a variety of purchases that are going to take place, and it's just a natural progression. I'm not even looking at it as being that much better, but it is the twelve months. And so that's, that's why I'm thinking.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I'm not in favor of this, particularly because this year, we are over projection because we had a one really big hit that completely throws, I'm sorry. Well, it was one big, it was a bonus hit, good.
We always have a bonus.
No, this was a huge bonus this year. And that's, and Mr. Lyons, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it was a huge.
Fifty-five million.
Okay, fifty-five million does not happen regularly each year. So my concern is that if we budget even more for next year, that's not going to balance us. So the likelihood of us getting another fifty-five million dollar sale?
We don't need it.
Is very unlikely.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
In the last twenty-four hours, staff has come up with a revised estimate of seventy-five thousand dollars. That's based in something. Can you share, Mr. Lyons, why you're comfortable with seventy-five thousand dollars more in estimated real estate transfer tax revenue?
Certainly, Alderman Grover. It didn't really work out two years ago, but the methodology still works. Where we see a budget, or rather, an actual moving up or moving down, we will usually budget halfway or a little bit farther towards the trend. We won't take all of the trend in, so we don't overshoot one way or the other. In ten-eleven, the last full year, we had a million seven ninety. We are at a million seven five three right now with the bonus. So if you took the bonus out, we'd be at about a million five through ten months. That's through October thirty-first. So seeing that, we thought that we could inch up closer to that one point seven million that. We've exceeded it by a little bit the last two years, but there's nothing in the economy or any of the projections that I've seen that is going to say that housing sales are going to go through the roof. So it's still stable, and we're very thankful for that. But that's why we moved it up a little bit more than what we had before.
Thank you.
Stable might also be an estimated revenue at about one point seven-nine, one point eight, what it was, you know, two years ago.
Given the volatility of this revenue source over the past five years, I could not argue with that.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
One of the discussions that we had recently that I thought staff did a great job in providing information on was the argument that some of these million-dollar sales were, could be, should be considered one-time revenue. So I asked for a list of all the, all the quote-unquote "one-time revenues" from large sales. It was an entire single-spaced sheet. And that is really the way real estate sales trend in this town. The large sales do take place. We've never been let down on the large sales. I don't think that one fifty-five million dollar sale makes a statement of any kind regarding real estate going forward. And if in nine, if in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we generated a million seven hundred ninety thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars in real estate transfer tax, taxes, the coming year should do exactly, if not better, that amount. That's, and he just said, he said it's volatile. It is volatile, but you know what? Our economy is volatile.
Can I just get a clarification? I'm sorry, can I get a clarification? Mr. Lyons, what would the one point seven-nine be if we hadn't had the fifty-five million? Could you clarify?
No, it was, there was no fifty-five million in two thousand and ten.
I'm sorry.
There was, that's what I'm saying. It's just the routine, regular sales. We had the fifty-five million in the ten-month, in the ten-month.
In the twenty-eleven budget.
In the twenty-eleven.
Done, okay, thank you, sorry.
Anyway, there's motion.
All right, seeing no further lights, there's motion on the floor. Would you repeat the motion, Alderman?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I would move to add one hundred thousand dollars of revenue to the real estate transfer tax balance, which, just to clarify, has nothing to do with increasing the tax for anybody who might be listening. It's simply projecting an additional hundred thousand in revenue.
Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
But Madam Mayor, that also, that also includes the seventy-five thousand by the City Manager that I don't know that we actually voted on before, so I'll include that in.
Is that a hundred seventy-five?
Then it's a hundred seventy-five thousand.
We'll hear from our staff in terms of what they think about it, too. I would like to.
Alderman Holmes, members of the council, everything that's been said, we really can't argue. The question is what ultimately is reality? And what we've, you have beat us up pretty well with my third budget here about what our estimates for the property transfer tax has been. And where we have been not all that great in the past, Mr. Lyons is late awake at night trying to, with his crystal ball, to come up with numbers that make more sense, and we feel we've gotten pretty good to come up with numbers that were actual. Everything Alderman Rainey, though, has said, we really can't dispute. The question is how it all falls out. You know, when we're getting down to the last bits of the budget here, we're still talking eighty-seven-odd million dollars in the general fund, there's volatility throughout. So if the council feels comfortable with this, we don't feel so uncomfortable that we would recommend against it. But again, we're, we want to give you the best information we can. We provided you lots of information, which you've already talked about and debated this evening. If the council's comfortable with one seventy-five, we're not going to dispute that.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I think when, no matter what revenue item you talk about, collection of tickets, collection of this, collection of yardway stickers, which is probably a really bad one to use as an example.
Yes, it is.
Collection of fees for people switching garbage cans, there, all we can do is go according to the trends and the projections. So we could, we could just argue every one of these. The fact is, though, in two thousand and ten, in the last twelve-year budget, twelve-month budget, we, it was a bad year for real estate, and we did collect a million seven hundred and ten thousand, ninety thousand dollars, which, you know, so that, I think, you know, while it's not a crapshoot, it definitely is not, it's based on some thinking, things can happen. I mean, we, things could be better, things could be a little worse. But I think, I think to lowball it is a mistake.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to increase the real estate transfer tax adjustment by a hundred seventy-five thousand. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Wait a minute. By a hundred and seventy-five, because we've already got the seventy-five from there, so it's just by a hundred.
Plus the hundred.
The City Manager.
Plus the hundred. Oh, okay. I just want to make sure what I'm voting on.
I wasn't pulling a fast one on you, Alderman.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson.
No.
Five to four, the motion fails. Alderman Wilson?
On our yellow sheet, real quick, I think. The increase in the can fee, the refuse fees, are projected on a nine-month basis. And I'm not, I can't, I guess, imagine any dramatic infrastructure changes that are going to be needed to implement that, other than the billing process and procedure. So I would suggest perhaps we can get that launched by February first, instead of, what is this projected at, April first? So pick up another two months of that revenue. I don't, would there be a reason why we can't get it launched by February first?
Mr. Lyons?
Mr. Lyons?
I'd just like to confer briefly with sanitation folks, because we run on a bimonthly cycle, so we would want to hit the right cycle and just make sure. So it would either be one month or two months that we could move it back.
So while you check that, Alderman? Alderman Wilson, members of the council, the other, other gradated, one of the other gradated is the raising the parking meter revenues. We spoke with Mr. Voss during the day today. He feels very comfortable that he can change that out in thirty days.
I saw him.
And so we, that's fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month, based on these estimates. So if you wanted to move that back, or move that up, so to speak, to February one, that's two months, that's a hundred and twenty-odd thousand dollars there, too. So if you wanted to mix and match, if you wanted to perhaps do the parking meters February one, and then the refuse do one month earlier there and do that March one, I think that buys you in excess of the hundred and fifty-five you're looking for.
My inclination would just be to go February one for all of them, if it's available. And I, maybe this, I guess this would be a good time to break.
Alderman Rainey has?
If he's got to check on that information.
Alderman Rainey has the light on in that reel.
My motion is that we implement those fee increases earlier, February first, instead of April first.
To the extent that they possibly can.
And I guess we're awaiting word on whether that is feasible. I understand that it is feasible for the parking meters. Do you know the question?
Not to parking meters, no.
No. The question is, we base the revenue, on the refuse fees, on a nine-month basis. We, in other words, we'd start collecting on April first. Can we start collecting on February first as opposed to April first?
I have another option?
I like options.
Okay.
Okay.
And that is to actually raise the condo fee to seven ninety-five and the additional cart to seven ninety-five, so that we just have two rate structures, which is what we currently have. And so.
What's, what are those other fees currently?
They're six, they were six ninety-five, like the sixty-five gallon can was six ninety-five. So they are.
Okay, well, that would be my.
They're not up there right now. The condo fee didn't change at all, and the additional cart fee didn't change at all.
Okay.
Suzanne, I'm sorry, sorry for the debating. But when I did the calculation on the, I went in and if we had for, like a four-flat that had one large and two small, I counted all those carts when I ran the numbers for that. Raising the small cart from six ninety-five to seven forty-five would bring in twenty-five thousand. So I went down and counted every single category we had.
Including the condo, because the condos are separate. They're different.
I believe there's five thousand, I believe I caught the condos as well.
Yes.
So I think I have all those in there. So I think we do have to go back to just the, starting earlier. And it is just a change on the water bill itself.
Okay, but that's still good to know that you changed that rate, too, because that's a separate, those are different costs, because that's not, that's not what you approved the other day.
Right, let me.
So I just, you know what I mean? You need to make sure.
So let's fix that. I'm going to withdraw that, withdraw my other motion, and I'll make a motion that we increase the condo cart fee to seven ninety-five a month.
But that money's already included.
It's already included, but we didn't approve it.
We didn't approve it, so let's approve it. So that's my motion, that we increase that cart, that fee as well.
Is there a second? Terrific. City Clerk, would you call, Alderman Rainey, did you want to speak to that?
I couldn't be more opposed to anything other than this. I have both load of condos in my ward. Nobody knows about this. We have just, we have just purchased a whole lot of condos under the NSP two. We're going to, we're going to sell them to people with low and moderate incomes, then we're going to raise the garbage fee again. It's just getting to be too much. We cannot do that without letting people know in advance. They've got, they've had no warning for this. People in condos, condos all over this community are struggling. They've got people who aren't paying their assessments. That means this burden is added to their assessment. And I'm going to ask, let's, you know, no more surprises. We've been working on this budget for a long time, and nobody has mentioned increasing condo fees. It's just wrong. And, and, you know, you don't want to increase the real estate transfer tax to what is a reasonable amount. If you think we're going to generate five hundred and four dollars from the increase in the can, the large can, I think this is going to go the way of the yardway sticker. I am almost certain of it. I think we need to think about this, let people know about it before we make this decision. Or let's not make the decision.
Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved and seconded. And City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
I'm sorry, I need to hear the motion again.
Alderman Wilson?
The motion is that we increase the condo cart fee to seven ninety-five to match the, and the additional cart fee to seven ninety-five to match the, those were all on on the same scale previously, right?
Yes.
So this would maintain the same scale that it was on previously. So increase those two fees to seven ninety-five a month.
That's in, and that's the option to your original motion, which was to move the date. And I'm still-
I just withdrew that motion.
You just withdrew that, and this is a new motion?
Right. Because this seems to put, you know, I got to put the cart after the horse.
Why do we have to mess with it at all? I don't know. I think no on this one.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Wilson?
I move that we start collecting the increased parking meter fee and the refuse fees February first, instead of April first.
Do you think we can do that?
Second.
And we can do that. Suzette, we can do that.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
I'm going to pick up on what Alderman Rainey said last time, that is, the people who are affected by these, you know, increases in fees really need to be informed. I spoke yesterday about the increased parking meter rates for downtown businesses. No one knows about this. Alderman Wilson talked about, you know, that he had spoken to some, you know, business owners on dumpster. There's a concern out there for people who don't know about this. Condo owners, I agree that the refuse carts should have been at the same rate as everything else, but no one knows about it. We really need to do a better job of informing the public about what we're discussing, so that they don't find out about it after the fact. And that's the fairest thing to do, believe me.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I, I hope we think about what we're doing. What we're doing is passing some very regressive taxes. We're relieving the privileged children who ice skate, but we're tacking on a big old tax on garbage collection. And there's just something that doesn't sit right with me on that. So I think we should go back, and this has nothing to do with getting even with Alderman Wilson, but I think we need to go back and take a look at some of those fees. If we're going to be raising taxes on garbage, we need to, we need to look at some of this other stuff that children who can well afford to pay a little extra are not paying extra. So this, that this council voted to increase this, the garbage collection fee on condos is just really hard for me to stomach. There's nobody struggling more than condominium associations in this community. And we're not doing the real estate community, or anybody else, any favors.
Alderman Wilson? All right, City Manager, do you still want to take a break to-
I think, was there no motion?
There's a motion.
All right, what's the motion on the floor? Sorry.
Refuse and parking fees in February.
Oh, all right. February one. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
I think we should vote against this. We're, we're, this, I don't see that the garbage issue is going to be resolved. I think we need to rethink that, and I'm going to ask that we reconsider that vote. There's got to be another way we can raise that money without putting it on the backs of condominium owners.
It's been moved and seconded in hearing. No one reconsidering it. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Oh, yes, thank you. Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, that leaves thirty-five thousand dollars. If you're agreeing to everything else, and I'm not sure you are just yet, we can fine thirty-five thousand dollars. If, if you're, if there's other issues you'd like to cover, fine, but if we're down to thirty-five thousand dollars, we can fine thirty-five thousand dollars.
I move that we recess and let you fine thirty-five thousand dollars.
Alderman Burris has it.
Alderman Burris?
Just one suggestion for the thirty-five thousand. I, I know last night we voted down increasing the parking fine for meters from five dollars, increasing five dollars. But as we heard about this tonight, and what we're talking about is adding more money on garbage fees, as well as other fees, but a parking ticket, an extra five dollars, an extra two dollars, that is an absolute fee you can avoid if you choose to avoid it. None of the other fees that we impose on people, be it garbage, water, sewer, taxes, anything, they cannot get around it. The five-dollar fee or fine, or an extra two-dollar fine, you can avoid it if you choose to play by the rules and obey the law. But we all voted against it. Well, I didn't vote against it, but you voted against it, which would have raised, I think, another three hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would hurt only people that were breaking the law. So, I know we're going into recess, but might want to reconsider a two-dollar increase. We increased the parking meter fees. Why wouldn't we increase it, the tickets, for people that are violators? It just doesn't make sense to me.
I'll support it. If we can redo-
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thanks. I just had a quick question for the City Manager. Could you give me an update on the salt dome? On the yellow, on the-
We're going, we're going to talk about capital as soon as we're done with operating.
We're going to talk about the salt dome specifically.
I can right now, Madam Mayor, or we can wait till we get to the capital budget.
Yeah, why don't we get through this first, Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. Did you want to take a break, then, City Manager, and fine thirty-five thousand? Or are you just pledging that you can do that?
I, I can certainly pledge that I can do that. If there's interest in the, in, in the parking meter violations to be something less than five dollars, I'm looking at faces, and I'm not seeing-
Five dollars.
Okay. I see a couple votes. So-
How much would two raise? I mean, it's, it's crazy that we're allowing people to break laws. I'm going to make a motion. I make a motion to increase the parking ticket fine from ten dollars to twelve dollars for parking meters.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
How much?
But my second only has to do with if we can remove the extra garbage fee from condos. I, I mean, I don't see that that's funny. I, I can tell that nobody gets it here.
How much is the two dollars worth?
Approximately a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's-
How much, and how much would the, would the condo be?
The, the garbage?
That, that is a more complex calculation. It was, if Ms. Robinson was correct with five thousand units, then it would be five thousand times the, you know, it's a one dollar a month change, so it's sixty thousand dollars.
See, so sixty thousand plus thirty thousand is ninety thousand.
That's for a year.
And if the two dollars is worth more than that, you could do, the council, if they chose to raise it two dollars, you could do both. You could, you could eliminate the condo dollar fee, and you could close the, the gap that you have, and you could be done.
What more can you ask for?
All right. Alderman Burris made a motion. Alderman Rainey seconded it. City, and City Manager, would you call the roll?
City Clerk.
City Clerk. City something or other.
The motion is to raise two dollars for parking fines and eliminate the-
Would go from ten to twelve.
Right.
And if I made that for qualification, that was for the meter violation.
Right.
Yes. Is that correct, Alderman Burris?
Right. It's only for people that are breaking the law.
All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
How can I not vote aye for people who are breaking the law?
Alderman Tindham.
No.
Alderman Grover.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
One, two, three, five against, this fails.
The motion fails.
So, Madam Mayor, what I'd like to do, if the council would like to take a break, we'll come back with an answer for thirty-five thousand dollars. And if that completes the operating budget, then we'll move on to the capital budget.
All right, we are in recess. For fifteen minutes, is that?
That's plenty.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we add one hundred thousand dollars to the real estate transfer tax, making it seventeen, one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Who seconded it?
Ida Jay.
Alderman Grover seconded it.
I think it's a modest addition to the revenue, and based on past experience, with our revenue intake from real estate sales, I believe it is a very modest projection.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Just a-
No, I'm, I'm adding, before, what was defeated was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I'm adding one hundred thousand, making the total one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
You're making it one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right, I'm sorry.
And the previous one was?
One million eight hundred thousand.
One million eight hundred thousand. Thank you.
The City Manager's recommended seventy-five thousand, and I'm adding twenty-five thousand to that. So it's one hundred thousand to this, one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand that is in the current budget, proposed budget.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
All right, is everyone prepared to vote on this? Or do you have questions? Seeing no lights, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Six to three.
Six to three, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the elimination of the addition of the extra charge for condominium garbage collection.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the extra charge for the condominium collection.
My argument is simply that it's a regressive addition that we do not need. These properties are going to sell regardless of, of anything, but the garbage needs to be collected. And the, the, the real estate product that is most suffering in Evanston is the condominium. Every time we hear an Alderman speak about new development, the comment is, it's a rental property, it's an office property, the condominium market is dead. We have these buildings that have rentals in them, they have vacancies in them. We charge people based on the number of units, and the associations are picking up the burden of the unoccupied units that still have an assessment based on, you know, their portion of the, the entire building. So that, that is where the burden really is. I'm just asking you to give some thought. Next year, if we want, if the market improves, as we all hope that it will, we can reconsider this and give people a heads up that we're going to be doing this.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Point of order, clarification. Would this be a motion to reconsider the previous vote? And if so, would the motion need to come from an Alderman on a prevailing side of that vote?
That is correct. It would need to come-
I don't believe that this is a motion to reconsider, because this is neither a resolution, nor an ordinance, nor the payment of a bill. This is simply just a motion. And I don't believe our rules deal with when a motion can be changed. This is a whole new motion.
Thank you. Could our parliamentarians answer that?
If it were voting on the budget as a whole, then it would be a different story. This, this is, I'm right on this, by the way.
Could I ask for some information about just the policy? And we lost the person I was going to ask. My question is, if, for example, if there's a vacant building, it's registered as a vacant building, does that property owner still have to pay a refuse pickup fee? Or if there's a condo that's not occupied or not sold, does that unit still have to pay the refuse pickup?
Being a unit in a, in a, yeah, they do have to pay, yeah.
But can't the, can't the association appeal based on, on vacant units?
So, first question is, if there's a vacant property, and it's registered as vacant, do they have to pay the refuse fee?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And I would assume, therefore, an unsold or vacant condo unit would still be assessed that charge as well?
Yes, as long as the water is turned on, the fee is assessed. Because it's, it's, it's paid through the water bill, and for us to keep track of if they decide to rent out the, the unit, or when the unit sells, we have no way of, of, you know, being able to track that. The, the condos apply to be in the city's program, but they can also put out for a competitive bid to, to go as a part of the franchise.
So they don't have to take our product?
That's correct. And some, and some don't. I mean, the majority of the condos in Evanston are not in the city's condo program. They're actually collected by the franchise.
Okay, so they do have an alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Cox, I'm sorry. Suzette, are you finished? Mr. Cox, would you answer the parliamentary procedure question?
The question regarding reconsideration, there, the rule in effect is City Council Rule 22.1. And it's true that it says that any vote to approve a purchase contract, bond sale, design of variation, or special use may be reconsidered at the same meeting by a two-thirds vote of the Alderman present. As Alderman Rainey correctly points out, the motion before the council at this time is not one of that subset. It's, but then the rule continues, the vote taken on any other motion may be reconsidered, but only at the next regular meeting held after the meeting at which said vote was taken, upon vote of majority of the Alderman present.
Thank you. So if this is to be reconsidered, we can only do it at the, on the twenty-eighth?
Pursuant to Rule 22.1, yes.
Thank you.
Good. Ben, I would encourage all condominium owners to call every single Alderman here and argue their case. And in the meantime, if we could find out how many, well, I'll give a budget memo later on that.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson, I have you down. Did you?
I already spoke.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was, do these buildings not have an opportunity to appeal based on the percentage of vacancy? Suzette? Oh, there you are. I mean, if, I understand it's tied to the water bill, but if the water's turned off, there is really not a water bill, except for common elements.[1761.13] is really not a water bill, except for common elements.
These people live in the buildings, the water is not turned off.
No, but for the vacant-
Nobody, I'm not talking about any water turnoffs.
In order to be in the city's condo program, it has to be 75% owner occupied to begin with. So, if they fall below that level, technically, they're required to become a part of the franchise and- or they would have to- they're not eligible to receive the city service under the city's contract.
Okay, but if a unit is still- if a unit is on the market and hasn't sold, someone has moved out, it's still strictly speaking owner occupied because it's still owned. Is that right or not right? I'm just- what I'm trying to find out is, is there an opportunity for condo associations to appeal based on the vacancies, the vacant units?
If they fall below 75%, they can appeal to the city and technically, the city, by ordinance, they would not be allowed to receive the city rate to be in the city's condo program in the first place. So, if they made us aware that they fell below the 75% owner occupied, and that's per the ordinance, they wouldn't be eligible to be in our program anyway and would have to seek garbage service on their own.
Okay.
Alderman Burris.
You had mentioned that the condo owners have the ability to use the franchise. How much is that? Do you have any idea?
It's a matrix and it's based on the frequency of collection, the size of the containers, so.
I guess my underlying question is, is it much more expensive than being part of our program or is it less expensive? So, where is the comparison?
It depends on if there are a large number of condominium units, and I'm not really sure where that breakoff number is, then it makes- it may make more sense to be in the franchise. And that's why a lot of them, either if they have compactors on site, a lot of those condominiums, buildings tend to be a part of the franchise because they can get service less frequently. But the city provides free collection twice a week for condominiums at that rate. We actually collect the condos twice a week.
That answer your question, Alderman Burris?
It actually raises more why we're doing it twice a week.
Because they have dumpsters, they have- they actually have dumpsters except the town homes, so they're sharing a container. So, we have to, as a part of being able to provide the service, we were trying to provide a service that's equal to what single-family homeowners were receiving. And so, that was a part of the program, to be able to do that. So, they're generating- they have the ability to generate on a per-unit basis roughly the same amount of garbage as a single family. And, you know, if they have a 95-gallon container, they're, by being collected twice a week, they have the ability to, I guess, use the same amount of garbage space while taking up a- using just a dumpster as opposed to individual carts.
Alderman Rainey.
When was the last time you did a census of the buildings that we're collecting from to determine how owner occupied they are?
Two years ago.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, based on where you're at, I think we're within $5,000 of balancing, does that sound correct, Mr. Lyons?
It's our last change, I'm sorry, I thought we were still at 30.
We added 25,000 to the real estate transfer tax. So, if we're looking to get to 30, we added 25.
Wait, wait, we added 100,000.
Right, the 75 was already spoken for, so you added 25 new. So, I think we're within $5,000.
Yes.
So, Madam Mayor, we're happy as we prepare your final documents to find that $5,000 and have a balanced operating budget for the general fund.
Alderman Burris.
As part of coming back with the balanced budget, can you also look at the, we're talking about the cart fees? I know you said that we're currently reading that as a status quo, that we raise the fee on the higher cart and we're assuming that no one will turn in that larger cart to get the smaller cart. And we clearly got stung last year on the yard waste fee issue. So, can we look at what other communities have done, if they've done something similar, to redo our budget to say, how many would return to a small or return the large cart for the smaller one, so we're not?
Our challenge is we would look at the same communities we looked at for the yard waste stickers.
Oh, that's a sad story.
So, I mean, I'm happy to do that.
I just, I think to say that it's going to be the status quo, that they're not, that we're not going to have a substantial number turn them in, I think that's relatively naive on our part.
Madam Mayor, we could at least do a hypothetical, do something very easily. You know, just if 500 carts move, what would be the impact?
Thank you, Mr. Lyons, I think that would be helpful.
And we will come back with a reduced dollar amount then there in order to balance.
All right, if no one has any further comments, we could move on to the CIP.
Yes, Madam Mayor, what we would propose for the CIP is a $5 million general obligation bond issue. We have a slide, Mr. Dieter, that we can bring up that would show the list that you have previously seen before that list had been in, oh, and we have the- thank you, Alderman. This is it.
I just can't see that one.
Okay, well, that's why we provided you the paper copy. I was the guy worrying about the general fund budget and they were worrying about the CIP this afternoon, so, thank you, Brandon. So, what you see before you in yellow is the projects based on our, the staff priority list that get to $5,180,213. I'll just quickly walk through them. We have talked about many of them before. The service center parking deck structural and waterproofing repairs for $700,000. The lakefront lagoon area improvements for $50,000. The bridge, street, bridge rehab, $50,000. Chicago Avenue streetscape, $100,000. Church Street brick sidewalk replacement ridge to Chicago, $240,000. Church Street rehab ridge to Chicago, $160,000. Citywide pavement evaluation, $200,000. Davis Street brick sidewalk replacement Hindman to Orienton, $230,000. Fire Station 2 boiler chimney and apparatus floor heating replacement, $210,000. CIP street resurfacing water main projects, 1, $900,000. Police fire roof replacement, $400,000. New salt dome, $460,000, and I'll come back to that in a moment. Civic Center parking lot lighting improvements, $350,000. Service Center locker room renovations, $392,000, $500. Fire Station 1 mechanical upgrade, $150,000. City Works signs, signal, and streetlight inventory and upgrade, $100,000. And Civic Center renovations, $487,713. Ms. Robinson was still here and I need bifocals. She has walked back, I think, into the other room. If she could come back out and give an update on the salt dome, we continue to look for two different locations for that. We need to move forward with the project. We've been trying to be sensitive of the council's calendar with other pressing matters, so we've not come back on the salt dome. But I believe we have a date scheduled now, right after the first of the year, to come back. Did I pretty much give the update? So, we are, we will come back to you with two separate locations. The money that is here, I don't believe we have a total dollar amount yet for the project. $460,000 would be a good start to the project. I don't know that we have a final number calculated for a two-location solution.
We do have some lights on, Alderman Rainey, did you want?
I wanted to know when bond issues having to do with TIF expenses are going to be presented to the council. I noticed none of these are source of TIF funds.
Alderman Rainey has requested that the council consider some debt financing for the Howard Ridge TIF we're planning and coming to the council on the 28th of November. With that, it may not be bonds, it could be other kind of debt financing, so that would be separate from-
On the 28th of November?
That, Mr. Lyons, is that still the current plan?
Would, on the 28th, to come forward with an estimate of the costs, seeking approval to then go forward and bring back the final cost for council approval. So, what would it be for the 900,000 debt assurance costs, et cetera? And have council approval to move forward with a date certain for sale, things of that nature. So, put it a different way, when we did our bonds the last time, we've done parameters ordinances and said we are allowed to do debt if we stay within these limits.
Up to?
So, this would be a small version of that.
Thank you.
And are there other TIF bonds being considered, any, no?
Actually, the West Evanston TIF does have it, but I don't know that we're on the same schedule that we would want to have. Do you have a specific project outline in mind? We've been trying to make sure we issue so that the funds don't sit any longer than necessary.
Excellent.
All right, Director Robinson, I'm sorry, you want to answer about the salt dome? And anyone who has a question on the salt dome, Alderman Fisk?
What we're looking at now in light of the recycling center option being taken off the table is we have eliminated quite a bit of equipment from our fleet, which has freed up some space at the service center. So, right now, we're evaluating whether or not we can get a little bit, a larger salt dome on the existing footprint, coupled with the deicing capability, using the existing storage facility and kind of reconfiguring and moving a few shop areas around. And then, that cost is approximately $300,000. And then, we are trying to have some discussions with the Planning and Development Division to find us storage space, because we need storage space too. So, that money covers the actual construction of one salt dome plus the acquisition of storage space.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Suzette, could you tell us, have you looked at repair of the existing salt dome?
There is no means of repairing that facility. It was, it's a concrete structure that should never have been built as a salt dome to begin with, and it is in a dilapidated state. And that is by two different structural engineers. We did some temporary repairs that were supposed to last a year, and both structural engineers indicated that the building needed to come down. And that's with a 10-year gap in between. And we didn't make all the repairs and the reinforcements. So, we're quite concerned with the safety of the structure.
Okay, so, our salt dome's going to fall down, is basically what you're saying, we can't get one or two more years out of it, or?
Well, we're getting one more, but it's, you know-
Yes, that's a great way of describing it. And can you tell me, as I'm remembering, Northwestern University gave us some money to, what, put a roof on the old salt dome, or?
No, they gave us money to construct a new one.
Okay, and how much money have they given?
Just under $80,000.
Okay, and that's included in the $300,000 you're talking about if we build a salt dome on the current site? Or is that?
That number is incorporated into that, yes.
Okay.
Alderman Tindham.
Thank you. I have a question, I'm just blanking on the citywide pavement evaluation. Can you tell me a little more about what that entails and why we don't already have an evaluation of city?
Because we're in the sixth year of the five-year maintenance plan. So, and we need to go back to reevaluate all the streets, that's where the testing company comes in and they rate all the surfaces and they'll come back, they'll give us a priority listing and a rating on each of the streets and they'll tell us, you know, which ones are in the worst shape and then we'll come, we'll do a field assessment and then we'll come share with you and develop a five-year plan going forward.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, it seems a shame that we're going through all this trouble for a salt dome when we have a perfectly legitimate city building that the city owns at the recycling center, which we've all been told could be refitted, retrofitted for a salt dome. Probably the most beautiful salt dome in the country, if we were to do that. Not only would it work in terms of retrofitting, but in terms of the efficiency of distributing salt throughout the community, it would be a real plus. And while we're thinking about the budget and, you know, charging people extra for this and charging them extra for that and not for this and not for that, I think it wouldn't hurt to rethink the giving away of that building. I mean, it just, I think about that every day, that this council has decided to give away a city building, something that probably has never been done before. It's not being sold, it's being given away, and I think that's just a shame.
Alderman Holmes?
I'm sorry. Yes, we did. That's why it's not being considered.
Well, no, that hasn't, I know I didn't vote on that and I know it was brought to the table in terms of discussion, but I don't remember a vote to say that we were going to do that. In fact, that is one of the reasons why I brought up when we were talking about Robert Crown, that we needed to reconsider having really a complete sports complex at Robert Crown while we were building there. So, I understood that, you know, we had talked about taking it off the table for that particular time, but we never voted on that.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Authorize the manager next to negotiate a lease agreement.
No, no. Well, I want to-
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the council's vote was to direct me to negotiate a lease agreement with the softball baseball association and then come back with that agreement. So, the council has not approved an agreement, they merely authorized me to negotiate such an agreement.
Okay, I didn't think it was final. It's not final. It's waiting to approve it. Well, no, I'm not waiting to approve it.
All right. Alderman Burris.
Just as we're going through, once again, can we mark the areas that we wanted to do if we get the Tiger II? I'm sorry.
The projects in 12 that would not be done if the Tiger II grants received.
Using the $5,180 as our amount, then we would be looking at going up $1.4 million. And I do not believe that we would totally take out all of the Civic Center renovations, but you would be going up from, you'd have the, in the rankings, going up to looking at the salt dome as whether or not it would proceed if we needed all $1.4 million within 2012. Because there was a $1.4 million net that we were looking at needing for the Tiger II if it came in.
So, I'm sorry, so you said-
So, I'll read-
Civic Center renovations would be gone as well as the salt dome?
Reading up, if it was just reading up, you would, the 587 with the first two lines, then 687, 737, and then the 392 would take you to approximately 1130, and the 350 would actually get you there, so you would not have to, it would be, you would not have to touch the-
Okay, so, so the Civic Center parking lot lighting improvements all the way down would be gone?
That is in the priority ranking presently, yes.
Thank you, that's, I just wanted to be really clear, what would we give up? Thank you.
In terms of Tiger II, Ray LaHood did come to Evanston and I did go to meet him and one of his staff told me how beautiful this community is and I said, "Not all parts of it." And she said she knew. Alderman Wilson.
The signal and streetlight inventory, is that the same thing as the, is that the federally mandated inventory? Is that something we have discretion on or do we actually have to do that? So, we can't eliminate that, no matter what we do?
It's another unfunded mandate. Alderman Fisk?
City Manager, could you explain the Civic Center renovations?
We have a number of projects that we feel are needed. I think we had discussed this at a previous budget workshop. We are looking at life safety and bathroom issues. And this 487, 713, Mr. Gainer, I think has at least one bathroom in it. And then, miscellaneous other life safety issues, the bathroom, we don't have a number- And then, miscellaneous other life safety issues, the bathroom, we don't have a number, but we think it's probably about half of that number, given really some structural issues that we'll have to deal with. The needs of this building are significant. So, what we've been trying to do is budget monies for a couple of large projects. We're doing a fire pump project for the sprinkler system within the building this year, and then the balance of the money's been kind of used on miscellaneous projects. So, this would be the bathroom, some money to finish up that fire pump project, and then, probably what, $150,000 roughly, Doug, for other miscellaneous projects? Okay, there are many, many air conditioning units. What's the number, Doug? I can never guess it right. 190 different mechanisms, 109 different mechanisms that provide air conditioning in this building, so.
All right, seeing no further lights.
Madam Mayor, what we will do then is we will take the $5,180,213 number, we will put that in your budget approval documents, and that will be the number that we would bond for. All right?
All right, everyone? No, we have not. Yes, I believe it is.
Donna Jezek, the interim director, is here. I don't know if she heard the question?
To speak to the issue of the, of hiring someone to do outreach.
From someone who's very far from being on the inside of this issue, that there was absolutely no pain in this, in this year's budget for the library, when it began as very controversial, and now it seems as though the manager went to the library board and made nice, and everybody's getting everything they need. Don't we have to share the pain?
I would, I would say, I don't mean to speak for the manager, but that over the years, we have nickel and dimed the library significantly, and that our costs for library services, what we're paying is well below what most other communities are. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I know, I know the per capita argument has been made over the years, but don't forget, unlike most communities of our type, we always maintain two branches, which always had a drain on the, the real services that the main library could provide. So, I'm just curious to hear about the plans for, I mean, we heard something the other night about a contest where we're going to have, I don't know, little libraries all over the community.
And then, that's not something that's being done by our library, that's being done by a separate nonprofit. Ms. Jezek, can you perhaps talk to the?
Sure.
And perhaps, and before you start, I think would also be important to explain the budget process that the library board went through.
I would ask Paul if you would do that, because I was not here during that process. But before I step away, I just do want to share with council the reality that last year, I believe it was, the library did lose approximately, in the budget process, the library did have its staffing reduced by approximately 20%. So, there, there have been issues over time, and also, most recently, in terms of reducing the levy, the budget for the library.
Could I ask you a question before you leave? How do you feel about library districts? As an expert on libraries?
Sure, well, there are three different forms of library incorporation or establishment, and by law, they are all valid, each of them is valid. The village method of incorporation, I believe, is the, is the least used, but I think that's because of the number of villages and not because of any.
But we're a city, so how would that?
Correct. The other two large forms are both a city and the district form. I have worked primarily in the city form of libraries, public libraries in Illinois, and I would guess probably about 40% of Illinois libraries are public libraries, are city libraries. They're a very viable form, very responsible, very, very excellent and legal form of governance for a public library. The, the issue of a district library or a public library, frankly, and I know people will argue differently on this, but it, it really comes down to six of one and half a dozen of the other. And in a matter of the city form of governance, you do continue to have the closeness with the city in terms of both some issues of governance and some issues of the budget. With a district, you're fully independent, and some people will say that that does bring you therefore closer to the public because the trustees are elected. However, the trustees that are appointed by a mayor and agreed to by council also have the very same responsibility. They are responsible to the entire constituency of the city.
They're not really accountable to the, to the electorate. I mean, there's a big difference between being appointed by the mayor and being elected.
It is hard for me to argue that with you.
If they've been elected.
Sure.
I feel that.
Sure, and I, and I can appreciate that. I can say, however, that it is a very responsible form of establishment. Many libraries are established that way, and actually, many which are established that way, at least one that I know of, have won awards for fiscal responsibility within the, the form of city governance.
Paul, if you would talk about the budget process?
Good evening, everybody. Our budget process this year really took three phases. The first phase was traditionally following the city manager's budget guidelines, the budget preparation guidelines. After that, and we worked on that staff internally, the finance department staff and the acting director, Leslie Williams and I. The second phase was working and developing the budget with two library board members, the treasurer, Diane Allen, and Benjamin Shapiro. They reviewed our work, we went over every line item, made some significant reductions in the budget itself, too. During that process, Leslie Williams made a presentation to the library board about our community outreach outside of North Branch, what else we do in the community, and those community organizations that we currently have an impact with and connections with. It was a really well-done report. And during that process, we made a proposal to add a community engagement librarian, to focus on providing library services outside of the buildings, in all parts of the community, in the best ways possible, the business community, schools, daycare centers, to do that as well as possible throughout the community. So, that's the position that was added in the budget, as community engagement librarian. And then, the last phase was really the board's deliberation on the budget itself, the library board's deliberation. And that included some elements of beginning to move towards a library fund. Library funds traditionally have, for city libraries, traditionally have an operating reserve and a capital reserve, and there are small amounts of that money to begin to set those up in the current library budget. And that's where we are now.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes? Nope, okay, Alderman Burris?
Hello. My questions are revolving around, so I know you're not involved with the Mighty Twig, but it seems like they're doing really well, and there's a lot of people there. Haven't you thought of expanding that model versus burdening the taxpayers even more? So, I'm just wondering why you haven't looked at that, since we had so many people come out over the last two years, and the volunteers over and over again, why haven't we looked at that in other parts of the city? It seems like it's working so well, and they're so excited to be there.
There, the, the current strategic plan for the library does include looking into a great deal of alternatives for community outreach, part of which would include the community engagement librarian. And in looking into it, it would be looking into the various forms of potential outreach, which could include various types of outlets. It is, however, true that any form of outlet does cost money to, to run, whether that's money that's raised, or whether that's money that is levied.
So, I don't, you never, you didn't answer my question.
Well, I apologize.
My question is, why didn't you pursue something similar to the Mighty Twig? You had all these volunteers, all these people willing to raise money, why didn't they come out and say, "We'll open a Mighty Twig on the west side," or "We'll open a Mighty Twig on the southwest side," versus, "We'll only open a Mighty Twig in the third ward, one block from where it was?" So, I'm saying, that was a model that worked fabulous, it's great. You have so many volunteers, and donations, and people there, so why didn't you pursue that with your library friends?
The library board, as you may recall, underwent a broad, community-wide strategic planning process. And the library board approved the draft of that plan. It's a very broad plan at this point, and equal access to the library services throughout the community is really the key part of that. Library staff is right now working on the work plan to talk about how to implement that well. I don't know if that's going to be the best way to do it, to have things like the Mighty Twig in each neighborhood. We don't know that yet, professionally, we don't know that yet. It could be a bookmobile. There's not much connection right now between the Mighty Twig and the Evanston Public Library. There is some storytimes there, but there's no library books that are in that location. So, that is a possibility, Alderman Burris, but we don't know if that's the best way to deliver services in a cost-effective manner throughout the community.
And if I may, let me add to this. Alderman Burris, members of the council, the Evanston Public Library is a little bit in crisis, and it's in crisis for a number of different reasons. One is, we have a muddled governance model. We have an interim director, we have library board members who are new. We've had two years' worth of community struggle with this. We have a nonprofit organization which calls themselves the Friends of the Library, but really have become a separate operating entity unto themselves, really making their own choices. So, the library board and the library staff really has no connection and no control over the work that's been done. I think you take all that together, and I would say that this library is in crisis. We're, we have an interim director, we need to move forward to hire a new director, we've been talking about this for two years. It's my hope that this can be a year where we can settle some of these things, because I agree with you, Alderman Burris, I think innovation is the key to moving forward the Evanston Public Library. Right now, the library has two hands tied behind its back and a leg attached, and we need to free it of that. And I think that the discussions that I've had with the library board over the last several weeks, the library board's feeling was, "Let's just have a levy, let's just show that we are independent." And I went to the library board, and I said, "I think that there's a better model to make this transition in order for the library, once and for all, to be able to move on its own power, moving forward." I think with the interim director, there's an opportunity now to hire a new director, but it's unclear who that director will work for. We have a library board that has come to this council a year ago, saying they wish to move forward with the library fund model. Every other municipal library in Illinois, the library director is appointed by the board. Only in Evanston is the library director not appointed by the board. It's my recommendation to the council that we use this budget process as an opportunity to move forward so that the library can do exactly what Alderman Burris is suggesting, and that is be creative, but we need to be able to set it on a path to do that.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Nope, okay. Alderman, when?
I'll pass.
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Grover?
My question's simple, and it's about getting a copy of the strategic plan. Was that emailed to us? We do have that, don't we? The library board trustees' strategic plan.
But not paper, please.
Just an email. I think it'd be throwing in, I think you remember, was it last year, that we got information about the makeup of the, our board of trustees, and I think it might be useful in this case, too, to have a good idea of who our trustees are, because the, they've changed since a year from ago, a year ago.
Are there any more questions on the library? Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, I don't want to be an obstructionist, but I don't understand what the outreach person is going to do. Are they going to the schools? Are they, I mean, I thought we already had a person who did that. Just, if I could just have, what's the model? You said you're going to be interacting with businesses and with neighborhood, how is it going to work? Trying to think, for example, in my ward, where, where are you going to go?
As, as Mr. Gajczuk comes up.
I think that's a fair question, by the way.
It absolutely is a fair question, Alderman Rainey, and I think, you know, the hesitation here, again, is, this is, this is a work in progress. The, the, the board has felt, and the board has heard, that library services are desired and wanted all throughout Evanston. And with limited resources, I think the library board has said, "Let's direct this to one individual who will work for linkages around the community in order to provide those kinds of services." It is not an ideal model, and I think the library board has said, and has come before this council, that when you compare the resources that Evanston provides, a library compared to other communities, I mean, it, it, it's barely comparable. So, the board has said, "Let's have an outreach librarian to begin that process." The library board is just on a strategic plan, I think they see this as an opportunity to come up with a new model. There's a new library board, there's an interim director. I think this is laying groundwork in order to do that, in order to untie the hands of the Evanston Public Library in order to move forward. It's not a team of outreach workers, it's not adding facilities, they have gone through their budget, they've reallocated money in order to fund this, this person. The, the only adjustments beyond a base budget for the library has been the money they're putting aside for a capital reserve and an operating reserve. The money for the outreach librarian has been readjusted within the existing budget of the library. So, they're trying to take those resources and be able to move forward. But without a permanent director, and with, I'm looking at library board members who are here, at least two of them, less than six months, three months, three months, two months. I'm sorry?
Three board members.
Three board members who are here of the nine, and of those nine, there's several others who are of junior seniority. They're trying to come up with a plan and move the Evanston Public Library forward.
Okay. Well, the, the issue for me is, we got rid of an employee tonight of a position that we know what they do. They do a lot. And now, we're being asked to hire somebody that we don't know what they're going to do. So, that, that is part of my issue. There, there would have been another way to, to interrogate the community as to what their library needs are, by interviewing key people and things like that.
And they did that with the strategic plan. I mean, they interviewed and.
Now, we're hiring somebody to do the same thing. So, tell us what the person, I'm going to, what's their day going to look like? What's their weekend? How's this going to work?
Alderman Rainey, I'm not sure I can do it justice, but they would be going to the Levy Center. They would be going to recreation centers. It's, it's really leveraging our current staff and relationships throughout the community. It's going to be broadly based. Right now, Rick Kinnabrew is focused on youth outreach. He was actually, that position was created when the bookmobile was closed, and he's done a fantastic job reaching schools, daycare centers, throughout the community. This position would really be more directed towards adults, to senior centers, nursing homes, the business community, and, and recreation centers as well.
Thank you, Mr. Golchalk. Do we have any more questions? Alderman Burris?
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, you threw me on that last one. So, this isn't a person to help children throughout the community, particularly in maybe some of the more disadvantaged areas, it's really to help adults, senior citizens, and.
Nursing home.
Nursing homes. I just want to be really clear that we're not focusing on youth in this, is what you said.
We don't know what to do.
I, I just want to clarify. I, I'm, I just want to clarify.
We have someone right now, Rick Kinnabrew, who's focused principally, really, only on youth. Actually, um, children, I mean, below teenagers. Um, so this position is really more focused on the entire community, but everybody, you know, young adults up.
So you have one person only that's focused on youth, and so-
Youth out, youth outreach.
Youth outreach, right. Okay, so that, but the second person that you're looking to hire will not be focused on youth, they'll be focused on adults, senior citizens, nursing homes, and working with businesses to do what? I, I guess, I'm, I just don't exactly understand what, what it is if we're not focusing on areas in the disadvantaged part of town that we've talked about needing services, and this is a totally different, uh, I guess, model or understanding of what we heard from the library friends over the last two years with the picket signs and the children here saying it's about children and about reading, and now I'm hearing something else that you want to spend money on.
Alderman Holmes.
But did, did we not ask, and I'm not talking about the Friends of the Library, because I think now we understand that it's separate, but did we not ask our library, uh, when Mary was here, that we wanted to look at very creative and innovative ways to provide library services throughout the community, to everyone? So when, and when he's talking about nursing homes or rec centers or businesses or whatever, all over the community, which I hope will include the west side, that they would be providing library services in different ways. And, and, and I think that, that when you're hiring a, a outreach person, we expect that person to be able to go out and figure out how to do that. So I understand why it's very difficult to say what the day is going to be like, because it's going to be different wherever they go, uh, you know, in doing that.
Right, and I guess my concern with this is, we're hiring someone that we don't know what they're going to do, and it's not, um, what we've heard over the last two years about where the needs have been. And we're not talking about technology and being creative. So I'm just asking what, what they're going to do. I think it's a fair question of exactly what that would look like, um, when I think, over the course, like I said, again, of the last years, and whether the library board says they're, uh, you know, in partnership with the Evanston Public Library Friends or not, the library friends are them. I mean, come on.
No, they're not. They're not.
Well, no, but people that were part of the library friends are now on the board, and they were very much in-
Wait a minute.
No, no!
Whoa.
Okay, that's, all right.
I think, I think that's-
So all, all I'm saying is, there, there's clearly a direct influence, and what I'm saying is, we need to understand what it is this position's going to do that we've been told over the last two years is needed in the community. I'm not saying to take it out of the budget, I just want to know what they're going to do.
No, no, I, no, I hear you, but I think that, I, and I don't know how I got on this road, but I think I've been listening and hearing, uh, you know, a long time, that there, you have to have two different views. You hear, Mary was here last night talking about, you know, voting so that they can have money to do something, but I didn't associate that with the library at all, because I knew that that was a whole separate thing. I think that what we've heard over the last two years came from a very dedicated group of people who had an idea about what they wanted. I think that's very different than what we've heard and what I've read from the library board, I think. And I'm, I, I, as a fair question, I think that there might be many positions in the city that we've hired that we don't know what they do. Uh, and I, so I would not want to just zero in on this one particular position when I say we. I'm talking about us as a council. I certainly hope that the, the directors and the city manager would know what they do. But I think when we're talking about outreach, uh, outreach is, is very different. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's different in terms of when you're going out, trying to, um, create a service, uh, meet a need that, uh, sometimes you don't even know what that need is, because the people that you're going to meet with will tell you what they, um, what their need is and what they want, and then they'll respond to that in terms of how they provide the services. So I, um, certainly, I mean, I see it that way. I, I'm not having an issue with it.
I just disagree.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It, it sounds to me like what we're talking about is someone who is going to be providing the services of a bookmobile without the bookmobile.
And, and I, I would very much encourage you to think about the re-establishing of bookmobile. I think it was a terrible loss, and I think that would, that would, um, uh, provide the type of services to the various locations you're talking about. So I think you're doing a good job.
City manager.
It, it's interesting that we're going down the road of talking about the difference between the library board and the library friends. Um, I, I think what you're seeing and hearing is the appointed board, appointed by the mayor or approved by the city council, stepping up and saying, this is what we hear you want us to do. For two years, you've not heard that. You've heard from a small group of residents frustrated and angry over a whole variety of different things, and you've not heard from this board that's appointed by the mayor and approved by all of you. This council a year ago said to the library board, we want to move forward with the library fund model. Library boards step up and provide leadership. And the library board is attempting to do that, and we were doing a great job. And then unfortunately, Mary Johns, who I think, uh, quite honestly, felt frustrated for the multiple years of, of back and forth in this community, found greener pastures and went to those greener pastures. We now have one of the most talented library professionals in America, who just happened to be down the road in Naperville, helping us through this transition. We have an opportunity now to finally fix this, to say that the Evanston Public Library can be a model library, that we can have a community board appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council to lead us and to be creative. Again, with all due respect, I think we have tied their hands, and now's an opportunity to try to untie their hands in order to provide that leadership and to be able to get a library director of national import to come and help this library board and the community move the library forward.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
I think the city manager pretty much covered my comments.
Alderman Grover.
Likewise.
Thank you very much.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think we've done now the, the capital budget. A couple of other items.
Wait.
Alderman Fisk.
Um, I wanted to go back to the salt dome for a minute. Sorry. Um, as I heard Suzette, if the salt dome remains in its current location, that we could build a salt dome there for $300,000 instead of $460,000. Is, is that, do, do you want us to, um, state that we have a priority for that, or what, what, what do you want us to do? Is there a problem with that location that you want to keep your options open for other locations?
We, we still believe that a two-location, uh, option will be the best location. We want to come back to the council and finish that discussion. We have not, because of the busyness of the council's schedule.
Okay, and-
We are not going to spend any money until the council authorizes a project. So this is, you know, this is putting that money aside until that discussion happens.
Okay, but you believe you can do two salt domes for the $460,000?
I, I, I don't believe we have made that final decision.
Okay.
But we need to come to a conclusion on this project, and we've, in deference to the council and your late meetings and other business before you, we have made the decision that we would wait until, uh, once we get through the budget process to come back and finish that conversation.
Avoid the issue of the recycling center. You don't need to skip around.
All right. Are there any further questions, or are we done with the CIP? I think city manager, we are finished.
Okay. Um, a couple of additional items. The council has not spent any one-time money with this budget. Um, you have $13 million in reserves. Um, I, I think it may make sense to consider, uh, some one-time expenditures for capital projects that are not included under, uh, the, the GO, $5.1 million. Uh, I think that this community has great needs with streets, um, and I think you could easily, uh, add a million dollars for street projects. Alderman Tenham has already spoken, uh, yesterday, I believe it was, uh, not only about local streets, but, uh, curb and sidewalk repair that is needed throughout the community. Or you could look to the list that's below the line, below the 5.1, and choose to spend one-time money, which capital projects are, um, to do that. Uh, this council's been extraordinarily disciplined not to use any one-time money, and this will be the third straight year you will have not used one-time money to balance the, the general fund, uh, but I would encourage you, uh, to at least consider this evening the option of perhaps using some one-time money from reserves, uh, to invest in the infrastructure of this community.
Alderman, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm going to strongly encourage that we take a look at the downtown brick replacement program, given the, um, cost of various lawsuits we've had, um, regarding the condition of the, um, of the sidewalk, and consider adding that $350,000 for a one-time expenditure.
Alderman Wilson.
That's, that's, that's the only one that jumps out at me, but, um, I want to think it over a little bit more, I think, before, I mean, we don't have to vote on it tonight, right? Yep.
Alderman, when?
Just for, um, just for, not that I'm endorsing this in any way, uh, what, how many streets does a million dollar pay? How many, how many blocks does a million dollars pave?
And Suzette didn't see me waver, and she was bringing a soft rank back.
Okay. This, this is not a total rebuilding of the street, just, uh, sort of the normal thing that we do.
Yeah, the, the answer is not as much as you wish it did.
No, no, I know, it's, she's going to come back and say three blocks, you know? Right.
It's a number that we, it's much smaller than you want.
No, yeah, I, that's what I'm thinking. Suzette, did you hear my question? About the distance that you've walked, right?
You said, I'm sure it's a million dollars?
Not a total rebuild, but, uh-
Resurfacing.
What we do, resurfacing.
Um, I don't know, it, it depends.
Give me a ballpark.
Um, wow.
Eight blocks.
More than four blocks?
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than, yeah, it's more than four blocks.
Eight, I think it's eight blocks.
Can't hear you.
I said, it, yeah, it's more than, it's more, I would say it was more than four blocks. Between six and eight, maybe.
And if you do them all at once?
Six to eight.
And Madam Mayor, if the council's not prepared to talk about this this evening, I wanted to, again, $13 million in the bank, um, there are infrastructure needs, in my opinion, in this community, uh, that could be served with spending a little bit of that, and would encourage you, if tonight's not the evening you want to think about that, through the budget process, it may be something as we move forward into the new year. I have one last item, um, and then I believe we would have, unless there's other comment, we would have enough direction from you to, uh, come back on the 28th with the appropriate documents for adoption of the budget. Um, I would turn your attention to page four of the blue sheet that you have, um, under one-time revenues, which we, I think, just briefly alluded to at the very beginning of the, uh, budget discussion process, uh, several weeks ago, but have not talked about with any great detail. I'll, I'll, I'll point you to the middle of the page. We are look, we have proposed $1,050,000 in one-time revenue for one-time expenses. Uh, included in that was transfers from, uh, special assessment accounts that we have for capital projects of $800,000. And Mr. Lyons, if you could take a moment to explain what that is.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. City Manager, when we originally started in our capital improvements review, we identified that the, uh, Special Assessments Fund, um, was carrying a balance that, um, potentially we could, uh, tap into, and the balance had accumulated over, um, through the utilization of bonds, through the utilization of, uh, the residential collections from previous special assessments. And, um, I did an analysis that showed that potentially we could look at, um, using the $800,000, um, of remaining funds in the Special Assessment Fund. It would be a one-time shot. Uh, it's, um, below the line, because we'll have to monitor it as we go through payouts of 10 years of special assessments, that's our timeframe, to make sure we don't drop down too far. Uh, and looking at it, I'd recommend somewhere in between zero and 800,000, but that's what we identified as an outside amount to be eligible for, one-time capital projects, alleyway improvements, street improvements, uh, things of that nature.
Alderman Burris.
Oh, this goes back to actually the yellow capital improvements. For the next meeting, uh, or you can send it to us, could you map these projects? I mean, clearly, there's not any on the south side, or very few on the south side. Just wondering.
Good shape there.
No, our roads are really awful. So if that could be mapped, that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Street resurfacing?
Thank you.
And Mr. Lyons, then, the 800,000, um, how would that, if that is approved by the council, how would that be used?
We would, uh, the 800,000, um, is in the reserve in the Special Assessment Fund, so we would designate a capital project for it and spend the dollars, um, from the, uh, transfer the mon, money from the Special Assessments Fund into the Capital Improvements Fund and complete the project.
So we would come back to the council at a later date with a proposal?
Yes.
Second, I-
Alderman Rainey.
When we say Special Assessment Fund, do we mean money that we've levied against people to pay for a capital project that's been performed, you know, next to their, adjacent to their property, like a street, uh, like a-
Alley.
An alley.
But it's not that portion, so it, it's really, oh, for our portion, we've issued, um, bonds, and in some cases in the past, we issued bonds for the entire amount so that we could complete the project, and then we received the funds back from the Special Assessment, the residents, and we in turn have, um, in some cases, abated those, uh, those bonds, and in some cases, not. So, uh, I can provide a, a long-term history, but it has accumulated over many, many years, and in spending it down, the idea is to, uh, take the Special Assessment Program back to what it was originally, that it would be specifically a special assessment paid 50% by a resident and 50% from city funds, and the city funds would be bonded, um, and paid. Ideally, we would like to go back to the bond for the special assessment would be 10 years, because that's the timeframe for the citizen payback. And it's, but they've been intermingled over the years.
So this is bond money?
Correct.
Okay. Um, city managers forwarded, uh, interesting article from the New York Times this week regarding, um, communities getting in trouble using bonded, uh, dollars for projects not subject to bonding. But you're saying that the money in the Special Assessment Fund would only be used for capital projects that we would otherwise bond for, but for the fact that we have this money in reserve, we're going to use that instead. Is that right?
Yes, and, and I'd be also happy to, um, approach bond counsel and confirm that we're on safe ground.
I mean, if we are going to use it for, for projects that we would, you know, bond for, then I don't see that that's a problem.
Alderman Fisk.
Marty, I would like to see the history of that, if it's not too much trouble.
Uh, would, I'll go back, 10 years.
And Madam Mayor, then, the second piece of this, which we've not talked about, is a proposal to transfer $250,000 from the township, uh, from their, from their over-million dollars in reserves, uh, for one-time expenditures in the city. Specifically, we were proposing $150,000 for vehicle replacement. Um, I think you're familiar with, uh, our fleet. Um, we could use a shot in the arm for additional vehicle replacement, and also, uh, money for forestry, IT hardware and software, that, um, because they are going to be leaner with staffing, the technology can continue to be helpful to them, and we would propose $100,000, uh, for hardware and software to help that, but with a transfer from the township. So that would take a separate, separate action, uh, as the city, as you all sitting as the township board. Uh, but again, this has not been previously discussed, so I wanted to put it out there. If there was an interest, we would prepare the appropriate, uh, budget amendments for the township budget and, uh, and come back to you at a future date.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Can we do that? I mean, seriously, it, it doesn't seem like we've been able to make any adjustments on the township budget, uh, or we try to, and then we're forwarded. So-
any adjustments on the township budget, or we try to, and then we're forwarded. So how can we suddenly take part of their reserve and move it to the city to, for vehicle replacements? I, I'd be thrilled if we could. I just want to know how that's possible.
I think by a majority vote of the township board.
I think we send the ninth ward Alderman over there and have her take care of it.
Don't put me up to the challenge.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, it's interesting that the surplus is there, which also goes to another article that we've all seen. I can't remember if it was the editorial in the Sun-Times or the Tribune regarding the excess funds in township budgets. And I believe for the last 15 years, I have argued that the reason why the township can give money to this group and that group is because we over levy on their behalf. And this is just another indication of that. I believe there's going to be a fight on this, and I think what we're setting ourselves up with the library board is another, another entity that we can no longer control the budget of. We can't do it with the township, and we are trustees of the township. So I, I think, I think the way we should have handled it is we should have reduced the, the town fund levy by $100,000 and then used the, and then assessed $100,000 on our side.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
It's, it's too late.
Oh, it's not?
Oh, we only introduced the levy.
Let's do it.
Yeah, that, that's the way we could do it. That's the way we could do it.
Is that a motion, Alderman Rainey?
Can I get protection tonight? I'll make that motion. I think it should be tested.
Second.
If you're going to take it, it would be, I think it would be more appropriate that way. That way, we're not having to take-
Let me see if I'm restating your motion correctly. It's been moved and seconded to reduce the township levy by a hundred-
No, no, the town fund levy of the township.
The town fund levy of the township by a hundred thousand.
Do we have to do that as township trustees?
I would think you're right, Alderman Fisk.
Well, we can't, we'll do it, we could only do it when we're, I mean, when we're-
And we could take general direction to prepare documents. We already have a draft town fund ordinance that will come back to you as a joint meeting, Mr. Lyons, of the township. We would have to make sure that that's properly noticed. We'll sort out the details of that. Alderman Rainey, we were looking at $250,000 versus $100,000. Would you be comfortable with $250,000?
The only problem is, I, I'm, can somebody look up what the town levy is?
Actually, if I may, the general assistance levy is much higher, so that is a, a much higher levy, and that's the, the higher reserve. The town levy is the smaller. And I can check in the annual financial report. It'll show me the, the reserves in both funds. And remember, we're, again, you're talking about the reserves in those funds.
Well, what I'm saying is, instead of levying it, they should use those reserves to run the town fund expenses.
Alderman Holmes?
I know we always say that we don't have any control over the township, but do we not have control over the final, the bottom line of their budget? So we always have that option of lowering the budget.
Only the town fund.
Only the town fund. Well, no, we don't have control over general assistance. I understand that.
But the general, the general assistance fund pays for more than general assistance.
Administration?
Yeah.
Madam, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Alderman Grover?
Yeah, my only question is, because we can't touch reserves for the general assistance fund, and that's the one that I understood had a million dollars' worth of operating expenses in it. It's the town fund, and I'm not sure the town fund has reserves.
Well, I mean, I will, I'd like to research it with the corporation council, but again, what we are talking about is two separate transactions in this case, that the town board would vote to levy less. You would not touch the reserves just in general. By levying less, if the budget is then at a higher level, you adopt an unbalanced budget, and the money will flow out of the reserves of its own accord. And then the council, sitting as the council, could have an identical amount increased in the city levy. So the net impact to the taxpayer is zero, and you have not impacted any of the reserves that way. Again, I will talk with corporation councils to confirm.
And so, and so, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you're interested, which it sounds like at least you're interested to get more information, we'll come back with that on the 28th, with the, with the levy, levy ordinances and have that information for you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? All right.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe we have direction to prepare the documents for your approval on the 28th, not only for the budget for the city of Evanston, but also the, the action items for the levies. One last piece of news I would request that the council consider canceling your November 21st council meeting. We don't believe that there is sufficient business to warrant the meeting on the 21st. So, Madam Mayor, unless there's objection from the council, we would, we would go ahead and cancel and move the business that was left to other meetings on the 28th and on the 12th of December.
I think it's already deleted from calendars.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything more than anyone wants to do?
Yes.
City Clerk?
You should have, bring your attention to the memorandum that was given to the city manager Bob, Bob Kowitz on the 27th of September from myself, requesting another person in the city clerk's office. Due to the fact that we're now down to only two people in that office because the vital records were moved back downstairs. When it first came on in 208, we had four people in the office. We're now down to two. I had a full-time deputy clerk, I had a full-time temporary, and I had a part-time who came in three days a week. Now there's only two. We also now have that mailroom that's assigned to us. And when the mailroom person does not come in, that takes the city, the deputy clerk out to do their work in the mailroom, which leaves a deficit in the office, in the office for the city clerk. I cannot do a legitimate, functional office with only two people in the office. I'm requiring or requesting that you give me a, a part-timer who will not be a union nor a civil worker for 27 hours a week, and the price would be about $32,540.94 per year. Our FOIA requests have doubled to 44 FOIA requests per month. In the past 10 months, we've had, as of the end of the day, 447 FOIA requests. And I think that's going to increase as time goes on with other things that's going on. So I'm requesting that the council will give me the privilege of having one more body in the office. After thinking about it, I also would want to increase that to $48,000,09280, to basically have a second part-time who will do 15 hours a week. I think that's be very capable for the office, that I can then go back to having the office open from 8:30 to 5 o'clock, five days a week, instead of closing for an hour. And that's my proposal for tonight. I would hope that the council can give me that, give me the request.
Thank you, City Clerk. Alderman Burris?
I'm not inclined to, just because of fiscal reasons, but I think that the amount of money that's being proposed per hour for a part-time person is substantially high, almost double what I think it should be for a part-time person, just from personal experience of hiring part-time people. And you're looking at $12 to $15 maybe. The, the amount here is, is way, way too high.
Alderman Grover?
Mr. Clerk, I appreciate your request and all the work that you do in your office and the time that you've invested of your own to become a better clerk, the travel that you've done, the enrichment stuff that you've done, and all that you bring back to the city to make the clerk's office a better place, a more efficient place. I don't sense that, however, that there is support on the council for your request, and wonder if there's a way that we can, by using some of our volunteer resources for the city, do some of the work that needs to be done on a daily basis to assist you through this, to ease the burden in your office. And I, I don't know if you've posted some of these tasks on the city's volunteer website or the volunteer Evanston website. That might have potential for the clerk's office.
Responding to that, I find that using volunteer help does not keep, because volunteer help comes in, they stay a few moments, you train them, they're gone. I need somebody that's going to be there permanently. Volunteers just won't help me. And if you want a office to be very customer-friendly and also efficient, I don't see why the, the request would be denied. We put out money for everything else. I think we ought to start putting money on the inside. I also offered that I could even use someone who was going to be let go to be transferred into the office, that you would not lose that personnel, or we can go the, the route of hiring somebody from the outside. And nobody wants to support it. Okay.
All right. Does anyone have anything further? Then Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2A, I move that city council convenia into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, and C11. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.